Good afternoon, everyone. Start off with member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Florencio Briones.
Present.
Member Salazar de Sigrids.
Present.
Member David Diaz.
Present.
And member Carlos Alcado.
Present.
All present. And Ligo, if you can take us into closed session, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Doctors in and out, there were no public comments for close session.
That's correct, no public comment for closed session.
Tonight in closed session, we'll be pursuing government code section 54957B1, Public Employee Employment, Director of Risk Management. And government code section 54957B1, Public Employee Employment, Principal, Almonte High School. And then 54956.91, .9D1, existing litigation, case number 20STCV0252. And then again, government code section 54956.9D1, existing litigation, to case number 20STCV917. And government code section 54957.6 for labor negotiation, MUEA, and labor negotiations with MUEA. And labor negotiations.
Okay, so with that, we'll go into closed session and we'll return approximately at 6:00 P.M. I don't know, I haven't checked.
We're now back in open session. Dr. Zuniga, if you can call roll.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Member Ricardo Padilla?
Here.
Member Fratius Piones?
Present.
Member Salazar Sigris?
Present.
Member David Diaz?
Here.
Member Carlos Torcedo?
Here.
All present, and just note that our student members, Italia Palacios could not be with us this evening, and she sends her regrets, and she is not feeling well.
Thank you. And if we can all please stand for the flag salute. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of liberty and democracy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of freedom and liberty. I pledge allegiance to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and then we move to approval of the agenda.
We move to approve tonight's agenda with the following changes. Move items number F11 and F number 12 immediately following item number D1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Agenda is approved with that change. Consider approval of board trustees' minutes for January 5th, 2022, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval of board trustees' minutes for January 19th, 2022, special meeting.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Aye, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention, thank you. So 401. Okay. And now we move to public comments. And we have just one, Dr. Zuniga, in person. Okay. If you'd like to come up, please.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello? Is it this one? Yeah.
Yes.
I understand that our views on the COVID-19 vaccine are not the same, and I respect that. I respect anyone's decision to get vaccinated. Asking children to get the COVID-19 vaccine in the name of public health is what I do not agree with. Scientifically, it does not make sense, since vaccines do not stop transmission. You know that by now considering the amount of emails parents have been receiving in regards to COVID exposure. And personally, we all know people that are fully vaccinated and have tested positive in the last two months. It has been a month since students returned to school from winter break, and the school has not shut down because, again, scientifically proven healthy children tend to do pretty good with COVID. The odds are in their favor. I sent an email to you all on January 5th and submitted a public comment. Apparently, it was not received in regards to the resolution to remove the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. Although the resolution was not what I expected, I am glad that children are able to continue within classroom training because it is their right to do so. Children already had enduro hardship of distance learning last year. What was unfair is that you failed to mention in the meeting that the mandate remained for student athletes. The response I receive via email from Mr. Zuniga stated that the vaccine mandate for student athletes remain because students participated in team sports are highly susceptible to exposures since students engage in strenuous activities and ongoing physical contact. I find that difficult to understand because it was student athletes, the first group of students, to return to campus in the summer, remember? Before the doors were opened in the spring semester, it was not a concern then to bring back students who were participating in strenuous activities and ongoing physical contact, when the majority of the students were not even vaccinated then. But yet now, it is a concern when you have a high percentage of your student staff and staff fully vaccinated with the vaccine that is supposed to protect them. I also want to add that you are requiring unvaccinated students to test on a weekly basis. So if a healthy student that presents no symptoms and is testing negative weekly cannot play sports because they are choosing to exercise their right to follow their conscience, their religious beliefs, their constitutional rights to medical freedom, and their right to inform consent, you are discriminating against a group of students that share one thing in common: they are unvaccinated. And you are not allowing them to partake in activities that all other students have access to. Not to mention that these students, like my son, are under place in their student teams, sports. They participated in tryouts. Tryouts can be emotionally and physically draining for students because every single one of them wants to make it to the list, yet their name is on the list but unable to play. I received an email from the district yesterday saying that the district may remain focused on social and emotional needs of our students by providing wellness center focus or on mental health, awareness and engaging in person activities, giving students a chance to celebrate, explore, and grow together. I ask that you practice what you preach. Sports keep children healthy and emotionally, physically, and physically. Let's work on prevention first. I also ask that you are inclusive with what the district provides for all students, including unvaccinated students. You are all elected officials, and you're in a position to represent all students. Please don't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have two responses online. We have one from Chantel Garcia, parent, and I will read that comment now. My name is Chantel Garcia, and I'm a parent and family member of this community. The last time I spoke was to plead with you to reevaluate your decision on the vaccine mandate. You have rescinded your decision after LUSD rescinded theirs, but you forgot about our athletes. There are many issues I'd like to bring up, and I'm going to start with the fact that in our area, we are only one of the districts excluding unvaccinated students from playing sports. To me, this makes no sense because many teams we are playing still involve unvaccinated students. We have personally called over 12 surrounding districts to verify this. This brings me to my next topic. The board made a decision to mandate a vaccine you have no legal authority to. After the group let them breathe filed their lawsuit, it was released that no school district could enforce such a mandate because of the legal authority was not there. It was also brought to my attention that many students who are unvaccinated have to test weekly, some who are being sent notes to class to be tested. This kind of segregation and system for calling students up violates their HIPAA rights and puts them in harm for bullying or even more segregation among their classmates and staff. The CDC specifically stated a vaccinated person can match and spread COVID-19 and its variants just as easy as a non-vaccinated person, meaning testing will not alleviate your numbers. Our district received 46... 46... Let me read this here. Believe it means 46,671,000 in extra funds from the government. I personally believe those funds were a bribe. When have you ever received so much money for our students? Now I know all of you are educated and are intelligent enough to see the bigger picture here. This is no longer a state of emergency where we are all trying to protect each other, especially with large events like football games and concerts hosting thousands are still being conducted as usual. And you are enforcing high schools with maybe 12 to 1,500 students to be treated this way. On January 22nd, Senator Pan pitched to add his vaccine to the mandatory vaccination list, including all this, including boosters. In addition, Bill SB 866 is being presented to allow anyone 12 and older to make their own medical decisions, including vaccinations, and/or not leaving out abortion or treatment of STDs. Is this something else the board will support? When is it enough for you, or is 46 million your price? Would you be willing, would you allow your children to make these decisions? The FDA agreed that this vaccine should not be mandated for the risk of myocarditis. Did the board watch the eight-hour meeting? What research are you really doing? In the last year, the number of conserved myocarditis cases has reached 21,000 and counting. These are only the confirmed cases from the CDC. This is not a mild condition. Studies have shown that 100% of the children and young adults who have suffered from myocarditis have heart damage, 13% heart injury which cannot be fixed, and 32% that will never go back to normal. With the survival rate of COVID-19 well over 97% for all age groups, don't you think it should be a concern? It is not normal for children to have heart attacks. It never has been and never will be. I have word, word, thank you. I have word of more than one student having stomach issues and not feeling well for weeks after being vaccinated. This is something, have you guys done research on? Have you taken any surveys? Or how have the children's health have been mean? Let me reread this. Have you taken any surveys on how children's health has been? I mean, if we really are violating HIPAA rights, you might as well. I want you guys to write it down, this website and the side that does not, sorry, it's not... The wording is a little off that I want to be on. That side does not know what is best for my community and not what I'm told is best. They go on to say the website is data.chhs.ca.gov. Take a look at the COVID-19 post-vaccination infection data as well as the COVID-19 cases, death demographics. Click on the page in each and see the most recent data for December. Take a look at the real numbers. The vaccinated groups, I'm going to summarize the rest. So it goes on to give case numbers. The vaccinated group holds higher cases, with numbers beating the non-vaccinated cases 1 to 4. And it urges us to go look at that same webpage again, data.chhs.ca.gov. We can all go take a look at that. Asking us not to punish the kids, let them play their sports, and don't ruin their experiences just because someone told us that this is right. I'm not up here claiming to be an expert or have any degree on COVID, but I do do my homework and sometimes... And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see how ridiculous all these rules sound. Can't go into a restaurant without a mask, but then you can take it off and sit down, so... Let's start making smarter decisions. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. The next, the final comment is from Winston Smith, and I'm going to summarize this one. This is addressed to, first it says Almani Union, then the high school district. We are the high school district. It goes on to say that, pretty much, that we're asking everybody to, that we're just going along with the government. We expect everyone to jump. When we say jump, that we wish we had more government in our lives because we can't make decisions or think on our own. That we're just listening to scientists and doctors. That we can't let people be critical of their own God-given right. Because, I mean, who cares if our kids and employees are messed up? But our governors and mayors are asked, are unmasked, and major sporting events, taking selfies, and living the good life. Okay. And then it goes on to say, after all, we strive to keep climbing the ladder as our masters once did. We, the Almani Union High School District, have had enough of these poor, uneducated, free-thinking citizens of Almani. Causing to question their freedom, that we're hurting people, that we're not saving lives, but we're asking them to do what they're told just to get jabbed. Stop the mandate, you're not saving anyone, you're a bunch of sillies. Says, we're going to be okay, let the unvaxxed kids play. Thank you. That is the public comments. Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, sir. No other public comment.
All right. Mr. President, I have a public comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Rosa Gutierrez. She's the community liaison in the Almani City School District, and she's a current parent to two students at Almani and also one that graduated that's attending Humboldt State. And I just found out today that it's no longer called Humboldt State. I don't know if you guys knew this, but I just found this out today, that it's now Cal Poly Humboldt. But Ms. Gutierrez would like to thank the Almani Union High School District for the laptop that we gave all of the seniors that graduated. She's using it up there. It's really coming in handy to write all of her papers, and she's truly grateful for what we did. And not only that, Dr. Zuniga, also during the Christmas break, her computer was giving her some trouble. And I'd like to thank Mr. Steelman for assisting and helping the student get the glitches fixed on her computer that she uses daily to write all of her essays. So the family, the Gutierrez family, would like to extend a warm thank you for continuing to help our students as they're out to college. So that's it. I thought that was really nice for her to take the time to call us and to thank you as well, Dr. Zuniga. Dr. Zuniga was playing phone tag with Violetta Gutierrez, but good job.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you. Dr. Zuniga, do we have anybody from EMUEA or CSEA?
I believe we do, yes. I don't see anybody from CSEA at this time, but you welcome to walk up?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members, cabinet, and community members. My name is Grace Hernandez, and I am EMUEA's vice president. I stand before you today to address the ongoing issue of COVID and COVID safety. A recent survey of EMUEA members revealed that there is a need for more access to high-quality masks such as N95s and more access to COVID testing for staff and students. It is well documented that masks work, but not all masks are created equal. The need for quality masks for staff and students is the first front in preventing the spread of COVID. At the start of this year, and with the rise of the highly contagious Omicron variant, the CDC emphasized the use of N95 and KN95 masks in order to better filter the virus. While we appreciate that the district provided five of these specific masks to all staff last month and that these masks may be available to anyone who asks, automatically providing them to all students as soon as possible would help further stem the spread in our schools. A second concern is access to testing for staff and students. Testing helps keep schools safe and the doors open for in-person learning. It is also the only way to detect the virus in asymptomatic people who can spread the virus to others or cause an outbreak. The CDC website states that regular testing is, and I quote, "especially important for families and staff with younger children at home, those at risk for getting seriously sick from COVID-19, and those who are not up to date on their COVID-19 vaccines." Regular testing also means parents or guardians get notified if their child tests positive, allowing them to plan for treatment and take steps to protect the rest of the family from COVID-19, end quote. While the extension of testing hours on most sites has made PCR testing more accessible, particularly for staff, we encourage the district to expand access to rapid testing kits to help with identifying cases faster and help people return to campus faster as well. EMUEA asks that you continue working to uphold COVID safety and testing. As new DPH protocols and site-specific situations arise on a seemingly daily basis, we clearly still have many issues and processes to tackle and fine-tune. But we encourage you to consider and act upon the suggestions and comments I have made tonight. Our health depends on you. Thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Do we have anybody for CSEA? Dr. Zuniga? No? Okay. Thank you. And then so, we move on to information part. Summary of auditor's report for the fiscal year ending June 30th.
Yes, good evening again, everyone. At this time, we will have our annual report for the auditor report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. We have our partner, Andrew Park from ED Bailey here, who's representing us and also is here virtually, well, not physically, but here virtually and ready to go here. So, Mr. Altar, is anything else you wish to provide for opening statement before we begin to audit?
I would like to welcome Mr. Andrew Park to give a quick summary to the board about the audit and the findings.
Great, good evening. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes. Yes.
Perfect. Well, it's a little bit late, but Happy New Year. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present virtually. It's actually quite helpful since we do have a lot going on these days. So before I get into the results of the audit, I'd like to just kind of preface in terms of what our responsibility is. So our responsibility, okay, so let's start by saying this. We work directly for the board. If you look at any of the communications, including the audit report, it's always addressed to the board. Effectively, we're basically agents of the board, reporting any matters after the conclusion of the audit. Now, the question becomes, what exactly are we auditing and reporting back to the board? We are actually auditing, if you recall back in December of 2021, you should remember a document called Unaudited Actuals. Basically, an audited actual is a document representing the district's fiscal year 2021's result in an unaudited form. My job is to come in and audit the information and report back to the board and summarize the results, and here I am right now. So, you know, audit report is a technical document, and without some governmental accounting or actually in-depth accounting knowledge, it's really hard to follow through and understand what's going on. As board members, it's probably the easiest way to understand is by coming to this page. We call this the summary of auditor's results. Okay, looks like you can see the screen. And this basically effectively summarizes the audit results, okay? So we are professionals, just like attorneys and actuaries, we render an opinion. Now, if you could just kind of recall some of these topical terms that I'll be mentioning and bringing forward as part of the audit presentation, I'm going to go, I'm going to mention this in each of the sections. But with respect to our, we have varying degrees of assurance. Highest level being an unmodified opinion, followed by a qualified opinion. Lastly, the lowest level of assurance as auditors that we provide is an adverse or disclaimer of opinion. Again, highest level, unmodified, followed by qualified. Lastly, adverse or disclaimer. So unmodified is basically synonymous with a clean opinion, okay? So on the summary of auditor's results page, this is going to be on page 88 of the audit report, we basically summarize three sections that we report back to the board. First is the financial statements. Second is federal awards, synonymous First is the financial statements, second is federal awards, synonymous with federal compliance, and then the third section is state compliance, okay? So, I'm gonna go through each of the sections and the results. As it relates to the financial statements, as of June 30, 2021, our opinion was unmodified, okay? That's the highest level of assurance as, as it relates to the financial statements. Now, the Almani Union High School District is a governmental entity and as a result, it's subject to what's called governmental auditing standards. Under this requirement, independent auditors are required to assess a variety of what we would call internal controls. In layman's terms, these are checks and balances. And if we see any flaws, we are required to report back to the board. We did identify a material weakness as a result of our evaluation of the checks and balances, and it's reported in the following page, beginning page 89 of the audit report, okay? Let's move on to the federal awards. Now, before I present the results of the federal awards, I'd like to present some interesting information. I'm sure there, I'm sure you've heard a lot of, uh, talks about federal stimulus. Now, I'd like to give you an idea in terms of the ramifications from the financial standpoint of what that looks like to Almani Union High School Districts. So, I'm gonna give you some historical information. In 1718, the district spent approximately $12 million. In 1819, the district spent approximately $11.9 million. In 1920, $11.4 million. Now, here we are in 2021, the district spent $20 million. Now, over the past three years, you're averaging about, about $11.9 million and all of a sudden you have a spike in federal expenditures of about, of about 75%. So, this kind of tells you the impact or the financial impact of the federal stimulus that the district had. This money was necessary in order for us to operate in, you know, somewhat of a normal circumstance and that pretty much tells you the impact of the federal stimulus, okay? So, during the 2021 fiscal year, we were required to audit three federal programs based on what the federal government told us to audit using a very specific, specific, uh, criteria. First program is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was enabled by the CARES Act. Second program is Education Stabilization Fund, also a federal program enabled by the CARES Act. And then lastly, Adult Education Program, okay? So, based on the procedures performed for each of these three programs, our opinion was unmodified, meaning it's a clean, uh, it was a clean opinion. We also did not identify any type of internal controls or checks and balances that are in place to ensure compliance with each of these three programs, okay? Again, federal opinion was unmodified. Lastly, let's move on to state compliance. State compliance is kind of a unique arena, I would say. It changes every year. And now, if you want, if you want a little more in-depth information as far as state compliance audit, if you turn to page 86, it basically lists a comprehensive listing of all the programs that are subject to audit. So, on this page, you're gonna see some yes notations and no notations. Yes notations basically represent audit areas that are subject, I mean, that Almani Union is subject to audit. No means it doesn't apply for a variety of circumstances. Now, the other unique thing, thing about 2021 state compliance requirement is that the State Control Office and the California Department of Education basically eliminated all input and type of audit requirement. And in turn, what they did was they, they upgraded the attendance from a distance learning standpoint. They added a lot of audit steps and that was probably our biggest audit area. So, what was the result? Uh, well, the audit performed on all of the yes and applicable audit area, okay? Our opinion was unmodified for all the yes or yes, except for unduplicated local control funding formula pupil counts, okay? We, we did identify an exception and it was reported in the following papers after this page. That pretty much concludes my presentation or the summary of auditor's results. Do you have any questions that I may try to answer for the board?
Any questions from board members? None for me. No? Mr. Torres, the secretist, any questions, Mr. Diaz? No, no questions. Thank you. Uh, Whale, did you wanna add anything else? Mr. Alatar?
No, the, the audit is, uh, is presented to the board and will be, uh, voted on as, to accept it in, in consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Park.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, we move on to our presentation of the annual app, uh, update to the 2021-22 Outcap Plan.
Yeah, thank you, President. Donceto, uh, as you know that, uh, we've been accustomed to doing the plan toward the end of the school year with the updated plans and the three-year plan. And, uh, because of COVID and a lot of things that have occurred over the last two years related to the pandemic, uh, a lot of the, the state modifications and requests, uh, have changed how we look at Outcap. If you recall, we did a one-year Outcap at one time, uh, no reporting came into place and then we are, now we're returning back to the three-year. Uh, part of the requirement this year also is to provide, uh, mid-year update and progress to the board at a public meeting. So, this is fairly new to us. And, uh, Mrs. Cheveria, our Director of Assessment Accountability and Parent Engagement is here alongside, uh, Mr. Cesar, Assistant Superintendent, who oversees the process and also the Outcap annual review and also updates for us year-to-year for our district. So, I wanna welcome, uh, Mr. Cheveria, but also if Mr. Cesar has anything to open up with, I'll open up to you.
Yeah, let me start off. Um, I just wanna let you know, it's, you know, as you guys know, it's been a crazy two years. The Ed Service Department's been working really hard on pretty much everything that's been going on. But I really wanna give kudos to Ms. Cheveria, um, with everything that's going on with, we have the SR1, SR2, SR3, ELL cap and, and, you know, with, with all the designated ELD coming up and, you know, with different programs that she oversees and she's been real detailed on all this information in a very organized manner, supporting our kids and staff. And I'd like to, you know, give her that accommodation that I'm very proud that I get to work with her and her expertise when it comes to this area. And she's gonna give you a very detailed report, uh, spent a lot of time on this, but thank you very much, Edith. Go ahead.
Actually, I just wanna start off by thanking you for the opportunity. Um, I haven't seen you guys in a while, so it's great to see you. Thank you. You probably remember some of this data. Um, this data is usually presented at the end of the school year, um, when we submit the LCAP for adoption. Um, but something new required through AV130 is that a presentation is provided to the board from, by all LAA, so it's not just our district, that includes four specific items. An updated budget overview for parents, uh, any available outcome data, uh, mid-year expenditures, and a supplement or answers to the supplement that's submitted to the county at the end of the school year. So, that's what you'll see today, those four items. So, the first item is the budget overview for parents. So, when we submitted the LCAP, we, um, informed the public that on the adopted budget, we received 110 million in LCFF funds and 29 of those were out of for S and C. The, uh, when the state adopted, um, their budget, our budget was revised and it included an additional $4 million in S and C funds. And so, that's the difference in the budget. So, now we go into outcome data. So, our LCAP has five goals and the five goals are intended to support and address the eight state priorities. Within the five goals, there's 31 metrics. So, we are supposed to be identifying how are we measuring our progress in meeting those five goals and we're doing it through 31 different metrics. So, the state requires that we present all of the data regarding these 31 metrics. So, I'm gonna try to make it as easy as possible, because I know it's a lot of data. So, our first goal addresses appropriately-assigned teachers in clean and well-maintained schools. And, and within that goal, we have five different metrics. So, with the metrics, they're all gonna be in the same format. You're gonna see the metric, the baseline data that we collected, what does a report or what does the data say today? And then what is our desired, um, outcome in three years? So, the first two metrics, the data's not available yet, so that's why it says it's unavailable. But our goal is to continue, all, no teachers misassigned, all fully credentialed, facilities in good repair. Um, that visit has already taken place and all of our schools are, are identified as being in good repair. And structured PD, this is based on last year's data. All of our staff received structured PD sometime throughout the school year. And implementation of state standards that, um, reflection tool will be implemented at the end of the school year. So, we will include that data at the end, um, when we submit the LCAP. Next goal is about providing students with skills and courses that will allow them to graduate high school, college, and career-ready. Within that goal, there's also five metrics, um, instructional materials, that data is not officially available. But in 1920, all of our students had access and our goal is to continue with that. Um, A through G completion rates, 1920, you had 47 students complete A through G requirements. And 19, 2021, there was 54.1%. Our goal is to maintain at least or to ensure that at least 50% of our students meet A through G. CTE pathways, it was 25.5. This past year, it was at 10.6, but do know that the state actually changed. Um, there, the CalPads report on this, now they're including all students that are enrolled in any one class, whereas before it was only students enrolled in an actual pathway. Goal two continued, so the next one's advanced placement data, how many kids are actually enrolled? Our goal is to ensure that at least 28%. Um, 1920 was 25.4 and last year was actually 27.5. Passing rate, um, it was at 58% in 1920, our desire or outcome for 2023, we wanna be at least at 60. It ticked a dip in, in 2021. But it's because of distance learning. I mean, there's nothing else that can attribute to everything that's going on. So, 49% of our students who took the AP exam last year did not receive a three-year higher. Goal three is student achievement. CAS was not mandated last year and so we don't have data on that. Uh, we're supposed to administer it this year. So, all of these metrics are dependent on the ASBAC and so that data will still be unavailable when we submit the LCAP, but we'll be able to review it in the summer once we receive the scores. The LCAP, um, 18.6% of students scored at a level four in 1920. Our goal is to reach at least 19.4 and last year it was at 13%. We also administer the reading inventory to our English learners. Our goal is that at least 40% of them scored basic or above and we were at 37.9. Reclassification rates, our goal is to be at 14% in 23-24. We were at 8.2% last year. And DNF rates, um, they fluctuated between content. You can see some went down, so someone up, but ideally in 23-24, they'd be going down. Parent and family engagement, I can tell you that, that's probably what I'm really proud of. Um, it's, it's an honor to work with our parents, I can tell you, because they're always so happy and just humble and just helpful. And even though we had a pandemic, they were still virtually, um, active. They were here for the Posada, they were here for the Lunar New Year celebration. So, our numbers were, actually didn't take a big dip. We were at 3190 of parent attending works, district-wide workshops and events. And last year, we were still at 3107. Our goal is to maintain at least 3,300 parents. Parent Development Academy, we also held it virtually along with other college-related events and our numbers continue to stay above 500. And the LCAP parent survey, that survey has not been released. So, once we release the survey later in the spring, we will provide and include that data in the LCAP. And finally, goal number five is student engagement. That entails nine different metrics. ADA, um, the difference is last year it was measured through participation data, so that's why it's different. Chronic absenteeism, we wanna keep it under seven and it was at 4.9 last year. Graduation rate, based on a five-year cohort, we wanna keep it at 87 at least and we were at 87.2. Dropout rates under 10%, it was at 6.1. Expulsion rates zero and suspension rates under three and we were at zero last year. And the last one is, um, data regarding different surveys. I can tell you that they're usually administered in the spring. The Youth Truth Survey, I think it's starting later this month and the LCAP survey will be administered in March. The next section revolves around the actual expenditures and the plan. So, again, um, there's five goals and within those goals, there's 57 different actions. Did you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. I know you have a long presentation.
Yes.
Um, here before us, but I'm just wondering, uh, Ms. Cheveria, if you could just speak to how you're benchmarking the desired outcomes for 23 and 24? There's some, you know, here that I see, you know, A through G completion, 50%. There's another one with the graduation rate being at 87%. You know, I'm wondering just if you could speak to, you know, how you came up with the 2023, 2024 desired outcomes? Because to me, I look at this and, you know, 50% seems pretty low for A through G completion, completion. You know, 87% graduation rate, uh, some of these other ones. I was looking at like the, the dropout rate seems high, suspension rates. Probably move, like, is it a national or state average or regional average that you're looking at? Or how is that, how are you arriving at that number?
That's a great question. So, first we look at where we started and we compare ourselves to the state because we can compare it to the, um, county and state-level data. And that's how we identify where we at least wanna be in 23-24. I can tell you that with A through G, what's impacting it is your CTE program because now you have kids that are potentially going in two different directions. But yes, it's usually comparing it to county numbers and state numbers.
So, are the benchmarks getting to the average of the, the state? Is that what we're aspiring to?
The goal, we always wanna be a little bit above the state at least, yeah.
Is that like 0 to 10%, 5 to 10%?
Well, within the different metrics.
How much above the, the, the average?
It'll depend on what the actual, um, where we're at currently. So, we're only at, um, let's say 46% and the state average is 47. Well, we know we can make it at least to 50. And remember, we're saying at least, we're not saying staying there. And so, I think that's the difference. When you're saying, um, dropout rate, we want it under 10, we were at 7.5. So, we wanna ensure that we maintain under 10. That doesn't mean that we can lower it to under 5. That's just ensuring that we're showing progress as we're getting to 23-24.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Cheveria.
Yes.
In the, uh, in the four goal, the four, the parent engagement in 2020, how was the participation of the parents? How much the parents really, uh, participate? Are you sure that they had some workshops, you were? And the results were, uh, it was a big percentage of parents who attended to this, uh, attend these, these workshops and to try to help the students at home?
So, the participation in workshops was not as, um, high as it would have been had it been in person, I can tell you that. And part of the reason is because they were all virtual and they were all district-wide. So, we felt that if it was virtual, anyone can have access to it and everyone was promoted, promoting the same events. And so, parents were attending virtual workshops and we had a survey at the beginning of the year and also in the middle of the year to ensure that they were telling us what kind of workshops they wanted to attend.
And, and did you notice, um, uh, some incrimination in the education of, of the, of the students when the parents tried to help them attending to these, uh, workshops who were helping the students? Because at that time, it was more the education also from the parents. The parents had to be on the students in order to learn.
Right, and I think, um, that would be our next step. Right now, we're collecting data and just participation. We really want to have a system where we're acknowledging and knowing which parents are, which are the parents that are most active so that we can see if there is a correlation, which I'm sure there is. But we don't have that data yet because right now, our goal is to ensure that we're just increasing parent engagement and then we'll look more in-depth as we move forward.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on the data or metrics portion? Okay, this is more on the expenditures and what we said we were gonna do. So, within the five goals, there's 57 actions. A lot of it is staffing, providing staffing. Um, so the first goal is providing instructional coaches, a science toesa, professional development, and supporting our teachers and our administrators through their, um, credential programs. And we have the instructional coaches in place and the science toesa. We have had challenges with providing professional development, particularly because we don't have subs to cover the classes. And so, that has been an ongoing challenge. Um, we try to do as much in the summer. But it's also, um, voluntary, so we don't get as many teachers because some of them are really tired after a long year last year through distance learning. Um, but the biggest challenge was the shortage in subs. Um, the next goal has 18 actions. Again, a lot of it is staffing. We have provided additional AP and CTE classes district-wide, one teacher at every school. Um, CTE staff district-wide, technology, not just the materials themselves, but additional staff, electives, and supporting the arts. Avid sections, we continue to increase the avid program at the different schools, and we provide avid tutors. We expand our resources in the library. We provide staff and materials through online and learning staff, which has really assisted us with implementing independent study. But we continue to provide support to students through credit recovery as well. Academic language development and math lab classes are still provided at the sites and paraeducators to support English learners. We have additional staff to support our English learners, and we provide resources for them to, sites to purchase materials. Chromebooks, I tend zero now, but that's because usually you purchase them in the spring. Mr. Cecil makes sure that we get the best for our students. That's what we wait later. Librarians, we have them at every school. We have Alex. It's hose zero, but it was really paid out of the ESRA funding. And then we are enhancing and creating CTE facilities. Goal three was student achievement. We do have, we do have a lower staffing ratio, student-to-staff ratio. We have college and career coordinators at every school, although because the SAT and PSAT is not required, there's not a lot of expenditures there. That's where the $40,000 is missing, but we're still paying for our students to take the AP exams. We're providing principals with flexibility in identifying, or teachers, to identify the different instructional materials and resources that'll help in the classroom. And we're still supporting and promoting post-secondary access to our students.
Ms. Chaviria?
Yes.
Seeing that many universities, particularly the UCs and the CSUs, are no longer mandating the SAT or ACT, how are we going to redirect those funds in order to make sure that we're drawing them down?
So we lowered the budget per se to address that, because that was announced last year. And we left a little funding there, because you do have students that are still applying to private schools or schools out of state that might be asking for that. But what we're looking at also is the big picture. We have a couple of labs that are being upgraded at the different schools in the Career Center to help with the financial aid, because that's when it gets busy, or with college application season. So we're still looking at how to support it. It's just going to be in different areas, and we've actually increased the budget because of that.
Thank you.
That's actually something I had talked to Dr. Zuniga a few weeks ago, in that we have students who go out of state.
Yeah.
Or, you know, that still need to take those type of tests. So I actually challenged them a little bit to try and find a way to still make it accessible to those students, because not everyone's going to stay in California.
Yeah.
So anyway, I thought I'd bring that up, Dr. Zuniga.
No, the funds are there. That's why we still left funding there. Yeah, we have a lot of students that, not, I mean, not the majority.
I agree, we had to adjust, but we still can't forget those kids.
Yes, no, they're still there. We still provide tutors during the day to support our students, summer school. This only includes the cost of July 1st through the end of summer school. It'll also include the beginning of this year's summer school. We have EL TOSSAs at each site, and we have Luminate, which is our data analysis platform. Yes?
So we have EL TOSSAs at all of our, all of our schools, right? And we're spending 787,360. And then in goal number two, it also says ELL support staff. What do you mean by that support?
So that support staff includes the language assessment assistance, assistance and the EL coordinator.
The EL coordinator, okay.
Yes.
So one staff, one body, but then like the technology?
The language assessment assistance are also staff.
Which is who? Elaborate on that.
Those are, we have two district-wide that are really supporting our newcomers, so ensuring that they're registered right away, that they're receiving all the information from the prior schools, that they're guiding them to resources when they register.
Okay. The only reason I saw that, I'm bringing that up of the English language learners is that I saw that there's a contract in there for recently retired, you know, Ms. Alvidres. And that just kind of brought up a lot of red flags to me. You know, if we have all this support staff already in place, Mr. Cecil, this one goes for you too. I mean, if she recently retired, and we have instructional coaches at each site, we have teachers on special assignment at each site, we have EL coordinators at each site, we have all the support staff. What is, what is Ms. Alvidres going to be doing for $21,600 for ELL learners? I just, perception to me that didn't look well for me, but we're talking about English language learners, which is a big focus in this district, and a very high-needs population that we're giving attention to. So that's why I wanted you to elaborate on that. It just did not sit well with me. Can you talk a little bit about that? What's she going to be doing? Because I'm sure those funds come from here too, or where are we getting those funds from?
Those funds are going to be from Title II, I believe. So they're federal funds. It's aside from this. You have one EL coordinator, and she's new. She's new to the high school system. So part of it would entail mentoring her to ensure that she's familiar with State CELO by literacy. She's familiar with our process for reclassification. She has actually support in being successful. And the other part is really having her available to the sites. As the governor stated, we're understaffed, and we want to ensure that as much support that we can provide to sites, we do. And so that's really, those are the main reasons.
So the EL coordinators can't support her?
There's one EL coordinator.
CAN't support her, and the instructional coaches can't support our new person?
And doing the job of an EL coordinator, you have one EL coordinator, and so she would be mentoring that EL coordinator, because she did that job for many years, and she's the only one that knows the State CELO by literacy. Your EL TOSSAs don't work with that. They don't work with, they can give you reclassification, or she provides the reclassification data, the mentoring, and the sites are the ones that actually meet with the students and talk to them. But it's really at the district level where you bring everything together and you put systems in place. So it's really ensuring that you also have a system that's effective, as it has been and continues to be.
Okay. I mean, I'm just saying, because then at the district, we have the top dog in ELL and curriculum, which would be you, you know, and then Mr. Cecil. So I would think that if our new person's here, that you would be that person, but.
I meet with her every other, I meet with her every other week, because I provide guidance, generic guidance. She's new to administration also, so that in itself comes with your supervisor now. There's different scenarios where we meet, we update on what's happening. So we do have bi-weekly or every other week meetings where I am guiding her, but there's things that are more specific interval that the expert that left us that had been doing that, she would benefit more from hearing directly from her.
This discussion is probably better off when we get to item six in regular agenda, because this isn't out of LCAP, right?
This is.
That discussion?
Yeah, that discussion is not.
Okay, so yeah, so let's save that for number six, and then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So goal number four, the actions included include, this is one on parent engagement, home-to-school communication, support staff, district parent engagement support, resources and workshops and training for our parents, and interpretation and translation services, and obviously events and items that are not required. Last but not least, our last goal actually has the most actions, because it probably has the most staff. It's on student engagement. This is where you have your counselors, nurses, psychologists. We also have mental health services provided by three consultants through the LCAP, but we were able to add one through different federal funds. We have CWAs, tail welfare and attendance coordinators at every site. We do support the special ed program, support for our foster youth. Pupil services, auditorium stage tax, lunch meals. We budget it $10,000, but this year, there's a federal grant that's providing meals to all kids, so that'll be zero. Resources to support the well-being of students, that will increase, because as we move forward, we have more direct services to our kids, more needs are identified. And then stipends are provided for club advisors. And that was the action section. Okay. The fourth section, which is really the last section, is a required supplement that needs to be provided. And within the supplement, there's five prompts that need to be answered, and it's really addressing, how are you engaging your educational partners? So you will not hear stakeholders anymore. The new term is educational partner. So how do we engage educational partners or plan to engage? So our commitment to working with our community is continuous. We don't just meet with our super PAC once a year to talk about LCAP. It's an ongoing group that we work with, so is DLEC, so is the LCAP committee. We have surveys every year, different, a couple of different surveys, just to ensure that we're always seeking input from all of our different educational partners. We've also worked with LEARN, our prep program after school, and we have ongoing meetings with principals. They requested to meet at least four times a year, and that's what we're doing to ensure that we are addressing the needs of the specific sites. How do we use or plan to use additional funds to increase the number of staff? So we did hire additional counselors, two at the comprehensive high schools, one in the online program, to lower the ratio. We've also were able to hire different, a couple of new online teachers. We've provided, we've added a mental health care provider. We've hired licensed vocational nurses at the different sites, and we provided additional hours for paraeducators. I think that's one of the areas that we also have a shortage in is hiring paraeducators. How do we engage our educational partners? Again, we had surveys. We met with different committees. We met with our educational partner, LEARN. We communicated with the Almani Promise Foundation, with administrators, with the different groups within our community. So what have been the successes within our ESRA plan, implementing our ESRA plan, and what have been our challenges? So we have had successes. We have staff that are supporting our schools and implementing safety protocols and procedures as a result of COVID. We have provided additional access to our students to mental health services, additional access to instructional materials and resources. We started an expanding learning and opportunities program for our newcomers. We've expanded our, I mentioned our health staff with LVNs. Our summer school program will be in-person with intervention and social-emotional support. And there is plans in place for installing and upgrading HVAC systems, networking infrastructure, and wellness centers. And the last, no, this is the challenges of implementing the plan. So of course, the biggest standard challenge is when you have a surge, because that impacts instruction. You have kids out, you have teachers out. We've had challenges that we just have to live with and move forward with as fast as we can. But I can tell you, we're moving past year with a lot of my surrounding districts, because I know that we get the information a lot sooner than I get the one from my child. So I do appreciate that, because the county is always changing protocols and procedures, and we're very fast at sending that information out to our community. We have been challenged, though, with staffing shortages. I think that's nationwide, with receiving items in a timely manner, that they actually arrive, and also with providing professional development. And the last prompt is, how do you ensure that everything, that you're expending all of your resources with what's consistent with the LCAP? And the reality is, we know it's consistent with the LCAP, because everything falls within the eight-state priorities, and our LCAP is aligned to the eight-state priorities. And we will continue to work with our educational partners to ensure that we are, continue to provide these services to our families. And then, these are just some final thoughts. We know that the pandemic will continue to challenge us with hiring, with implementing safety protocols as the protocols change, and with addressing learning loss as a result of distant learning. But we are committed to implementing the actions outlined in the LCAP. If we have to increase, we increase. If we modify, we modify. But we also want to thank our community, because they've been there through all of it. They're always working with us. That includes our staff, that includes our students. And I know that together, we'll motivate and support our students, so that they graduate with the skills they need to be college and career-ready. So that was the presentation. Are there any other questions that you might have?
Mr. Palia, do you have any questions?
Yes. You know, in the new term of educational partners?
Yes.
If we turn to that slide, at any point, have we had a discussion with, for example, our student board members, Sitlali, and the SAC, the Student Advisory Committee? And then, we always do the Youth Truth surveys, right?
Correct.
And the data is like overwhelming, where we're like, okay, so we have all this data. What are we going to do with it? I think this would be a great place to know what to do with it, because they are the number-one consumer, but I don't see, I don't see that we listed anything from Youth Truth or the Student Advisory Committee. I would like to make that suggestion for them to have input, and for them to see, this is very, it's very busy, and it has to be this way, because it's what gets turned in. But like, when Mr. Larry Cecil, I always ask him, give me the one pager where you, the one you sent us, of how much money we have in there, how much we allotted to a specific expenditure, how much we spent, and how much we have left over. But I think it would be important, those students that are in the Student Advisory Committee are extremely bright to understand where all the funds that we're getting are going. And as we found out time and time again, sometimes we think we're spending it in the right place, but somebody like Sitlali will tell us like, no, you're wrong. Let me tell you where I think we should spend more money. I think it would help if we were to include them. And maybe we have, I don't know, maybe I could stand corrected.
We did, I did with Dr. Zuniga, present SR3 to the Student Advisory Committee. We do plan on revising that again within six months.
Yeah.
Because one of the things with SR3 is we're part of six months to revisit where you are, where you're going, and those are part of the stakeholders will revisit the plans with our finances. And I also did give you an update last week on where we are with the.
I saw that. I saw that, and I think that would work for students. And I get it about ESRA funds, but ESRA 1, ESRA 2, ESRA 3. But that's just one thing. This is the comprehensive, the big picture. And I think our students can handle the big picture, and they need to see, look, this is how much money we are investing for your safety. This is how much we pay for our school resource officers. This is how much we pay for, you know, this person on your campus, because then the students could say, well, how do those services directly affect me? What do I get? You're spending all that money on the, you know, instructional coach, but how does that tie to me? Just talking more about that, because that, everybody's there, DLEC, ELEC, but the students aren't there.
We will be doing that. We, like I said, every six months, so into March, beginning of April, we're going to put everything together, from our LCAP, ELL, to ESRA 1, 2, 3, to our different funding sources, and report that out to the Student Advisory, parents, communities, stakeholders, or partners. So yeah, that will all.
And I say that to our students, because, you know, sometimes students will participate, but they feel like they're just going through the motions, like, what we say on the surveys that we take, do we just take them just to take them? Or are they truly going to do something with that data?
Yeah.
You know, and I think somebody like Sitlali, who made history by being, you know, the, our trustee as a junior and now as a senior, never been done before, she's extremely capable of working alongside you or Mr. Chaviria to bring the rest of the students along, and to, more and more young people want a voice in what happens to them. I mean.
You'll notice that in our SR3, we had a large amount of students that did participate, and they did. And I provided you with their verbal, what their inputs they put in.
Yeah.
And also, if you look at their input they gave, it actually shows in the plan itself that we're putting those fundings where they felt the emphasis needed to be placed.
Okay. And then one final question. I know you talked about professional development for teachers, and you guys have done numerous surveys on that. As an educational person for our district, the director, what would you say is the number one and number two or number three, one, two, three, top three issues or PD that our teachers want to see in the Almani Union High School District?
That they want to see?
That they want.
I can tell you, based on last year, the results.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because I remember that, you know, teachers are the instructional experts, because they're out on the field. You know, they'll tell you and tell Mr. Cecil, you guys are at the district. You haven't been in the classroom in X amount of years. I'm being realistic, and I'm being transparent. They'll say that to your face. And they'll say, well, you know, we are asking for training in this. Don't give us what you think we want. Same thing for our students. You know, we make decisions thinking that we know what they want, and then from the mouth of bays, we hear like, no, like, where did you come up with that? Same thing with teachers. What have they said in those surveys? What do they want training on?
So let me just go back to your prior question, and then I'll answer that one. So with the LCAP, we do actually go out and reach out to the different groups. We go into ALD classrooms to promote the survey. I know Dr. Zuniga has presented it to the Student Advisory Committee, so we do reach out for input on that. When it comes to teachers, it's not just teachers. When it comes to teachers, it's not just teachers, it's all of our staff. We have a professional development survey where we're asking them, what is it that you want to be trained on? Technology tends to be number one, instructional strategies, up to date. I mean, last year, clearly it was technology because of the distance learning, the different resources with paraeducators, or not just paraeducators, with classified staff. They said the same thing, how do we support, provide more strategies, and how can we support our students, not just in the classroom, but outside of the classroom? So, but it's a survey that goes out district-wide to all of our staff, and that's what we use and guide, use as a guide to help us with planning professional development throughout the year.
Got it. So I heard technology and instructional strategy.
Resources, knowledge on recent curriculum, or just planning time to ensure that they're working together to create lessons, sharing best practices.
Got it. Thank you. No further questions for me. No questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. How, how do you think that the community can help you, help, no, help the district to support this program? The community has to, to, to get engaged in this one, as you, I know that you have been trying a lot to do it, but all the problems that you have, all the challenges. How do you think, do you have some ideas that you can let know the community, how we can help you to keep it up with the success of the program, because at the end is, is for supporting our students?
Right. So we actually, I actually rely a lot on the community to come and tell me, you know what, have you tried this? Can we do this? And that's how we learn and grow.
You're an open person, you're opening.
When I'm meeting with parents, with the different committees, with D-LAC, with Super PAC, with LCAP, you have different stakeholders that come and bring ideas. That's how we come up with a lot of our ideas. It's not because we're thinking of them as educators, it's because we have the community telling us, have you tried this? Sometimes I'll bring something from my kid's school because that's something as a parent that I see that has benefited my household, so I'll bring it here. But a lot of it is engaging them, so ensuring that you make calls, you get emails, send emails out, you meet with them. I think a lot of the time, it's just having that conversation so that they're telling you, you know, have you different ideas? So it's really, if they can, they have any ideas, they're always, we're always open to hear them. They can come to any of our meetings, they can just contact me, and I'm sure I'll meet with them if I'm there. But we're really open to always trying things that, that is being suggested on helping our kids grow and succeed.
Thank you. No more questions, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
It is really, it is a lot of work.
No, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Salcedo. We do have our guests returning from V and May, as well as NDC. You make your way up here, as you make your way up there, just to want to remind everyone what our timeline has been, and I'm sure that it'll be summarized very well by Valerie Martinez here from V and May.
Yes.
The Board understands that the process that took, I'd say, the last six, seven months, as far as the public hearings and the public meetings, and well over a year of planning time was collective, was something that our partners here assisted the district in ensuring that the process was done with fidelity, as well as outreach for the community to engage in. As we have heard with the pandemic, it took a spin on what the bi-trustee process was known for in the last couple of years, with just something that was fairly new to everyone. But with the pandemic, it has drastically changed that, and it put us in a different direction, but nevertheless, I am proud to say that the process for this district was handled accordingly, as scripted, and what the Board had directed us to do. So I want to thank our partners here that are with us this evening, and I believe this will be our last public hearing for the school year regarding the bi-trustee process. So with that, I want to welcome Valerie back again. Thank you for being here involved with Doug.
Thank you so much, very, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Board, Superintendent, thank you so much. We have, we're reaching that finish line. So without further ado, can we get the PowerPoint up? Again, we have another map that you've probably seen that went up, I believe, a week and a half ago. Thank you. Perfect. This, this one here? Okay. Okay. So I'm going to try to run through, down? Okay. All right, there we go. So again, just on background for anyone who might be tuning in for the first time on this process, the Almani Union High School District is transitioning from at-large to bi-trustee area elections. The district-initiated process is being implemented to comply with the California Voting Rights Act, so this is something that the Board has determined that they are moving forward with. In order to comply with this, in many other cases in other districts, they're being sued to move in this direction, but the Board is moving the district accordingly. To define the trustee areas, the district is undertaking a process led by our public involvement team and a demographer. Bi-trustee area elections for the Almani Union High School District will begin this year in November, so we have elections in November, and this is when it's anticipated to begin. So the district has committed, the Board has committed, to have a process that is transparent, inclusive, and community-focused. We have, in fact, recorded and considered, or what we've recorded, you've considered all comments. We are ensuring the community understands the why and how. We have, we are meeting legal deadlines, and we are ensuring through our demographer team that the maps meet all legal and regulatory criteria. There has been extensive public engagement. We've, we divided it into two parts. As we've said before, the first part was in May to inform, it was a community information component, in order to kind of elevate everyone's awareness about the process and what it would look like. So we informed the district's transition, informed the community about the district transition, again, from at-large to bi-trustee area elections. We provided an understanding about the district formation process, and then we highlighted why this was important. And then, the formal mapping process has been taking place since August until now, with a series of public meetings. We've provided overviews of the mapping process, conducted regular updates here at the Board meeting, at the Board meetings, as well as in a variety of community spaces. And again, we have consistently presented draft map options to gather community input. Just some highlights on work that's been done. Again, we did two community information sessions in May. There have been seven public hearings here in this space with the Board. There have been five hybrid community open houses. We were doing them during that space when COVID had kind of taken a little bit of a dip, so some people wanted to meet in person, other people felt uncomfortable, so they wanted to meet virtually, so we created space for both. We've done one-on-one meetings with the mapping team that was offered. We've done five, actually, it might be six now, group presentations this morning. Claudia was meeting with the Almani, South Almani Chamber. We've done six community pop-up events, we've reviewed eight maps, and three maps have been selected, as you know, at our last public hearing here for final consideration by the Board. We have e-blasted, we have had a, a microsite with informational materials, there have been newspaper ads, lots of stories in local media, lots of social media. A lot of folks have been contacted and reached out to in order to get input on this, on this process and on these maps. We have made adjustments, adjustments for the community to ensure that there were very few barriers. Again, hybrid meetings, as I discussed. We've adjusted map labels to ensure that there is continuity, and people felt comfortable with the way the maps were labeled. We've, the demographers have created more maps in order to ensure that they were making adjustments based on feedback from community and from Board. We've conducted the meetings in multiple languages, and again, we've conducted mutual, additional group presentations, again, even up until today. So with that, again, and just as we did the last time, we kind of went back and forth between myself and the demographer, so with that, I will hand over now to Doug.
Thank you. So at this point, you can all probably recite these yourselves, because we've been over these many, many times at each of these hearings and outreach efforts, but just for anyone who's new to this, the Board adopted criteria are a combination of both legal requirements and the Board's goals. So of course, number one is equal population, followed closely by compliant, full compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and avoiding racial gary-mandering, which is the reference to the Shaw v. Reno case. We also want the districts to be contiguous, you know, no pieces in different parts of the district. And this is the big one, to respect communities of interest as much as possible. It's always tricky, given the strict requirements, equal population rule. We want to follow visible, natural, and man-made features so that they're easy for the voters to understand, and we do want to consider school attendance zone boundaries. That can mean ensuring Board members represent multiple attendance zones, or it can mean trying to consolidate them, just as long as we're acknowledging and considering them. Then we also, the Board also said, please try to follow jurisdictional boundaries, primarily that would fall into cities for the most part in this district. Attempt to avoid head-to-head contests between incumbents so that the reelection decisions are left up to the voters rather than dictated by lines. And then, if we know a trustee area is going to be faster growth than the others, we can under-populate that slightly within that population requirement in order to offset that coming growth. And then, of course, you can consider other factors that the community or the Board members raise during the process. So we've been through, as you've just heard, an extensive series of maps. We have narrowed this down. The Board at its last meeting did narrow down the choices. So we're now looking at Green Three, and then we've got the Orange, Yellow Two, and the new Green Three, which is just a slight revision to Green Two that you talked about last time. And all these maps do comply with all legal requirements, and then balance out the other considerations in different ways. So, so now we're really moving to your deliberation stage. So, and with that, I'll hand back to Valerie.
Sure. The comments that we have heard, again, the community has said that they prefer compact districts with diversified ethnic representation, would like to see a representative from South Almani to keep South Almani community together. Again, this is just a comment, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to move in this direction. Include more than one school attendance boundary in each trustee area. Each trustee area should include a high school facility. Two incumbents in the same trustee area is not ideal for, frankly, it's aligned with, with your criteria. Some folks preferred the orange or green maps, consider, there was a comment that we should consider community college and feeder school elected attendance boundaries. And then, there has been some voter fatigue and some participation fatigue because, again, there's been a lot going on aside from this, right? With the presidential election, and with all the redistricting that's happening, you know, across the country, frankly, but across California and across this area. And, but consistently, what we've heard is as people are trying to figure out, what do I want to participate in? There is confidence in strong district leadership. This Board is known, each one of you are known entities within this district, grew up here, went to school here, you know, have strong ties in the community. And so there, we did hear that feedback that there is that sense that, you know, this will be a fair and transparent process. Do you want to go through these maps, or do you want me to just kind of?
I can just highlight that the key difference since Green Three is new. Green Three, the only change was the small revision, bringing that area bordered by Santa Anita, Bryant, Tyler, and Valley into trustee area three, similar to what the Board had asked for in the yellow map previously. So let's just add, make sure that neighborhood is in area three in both maps. There was a small enough population change because part of that area was already in three, that it did not require an offsetting change. So that's the only difference between Green Three and, which saw previously in Green Two. On a larger scale, a big picture briefly, Green Three really has two southern districts that run north-south parallel to each other, really along Tyler is the main division there. And then, there's a little extra population south of the freeway then is needed for two trustee areas, so in this map, area three comes down and picks up that extra population. That means area one comes over to the west edge of the district, and area two goes up the eastern coast a bit, or the eastern border a bit.
And we received no comments on this because obviously it's a new map.
The orange map is a very different approach. You can see this, there are only one entirely south of the freeway trustee areas, and then areas three and five both have significant population south of the freeway, but a five does come north of the freeway as well. And you get more of a area one going along the northern boundary of the district. And again, you've seen this one before. And these are comments that you saw at the last hearing. And Yellow Two, again, is brought back at your direction after the last hearing. Just to briefly touch on the differences, in this case, area three stays north of the freeway, and instead, area two over in the east is the one that drops down and picks up a little population from south of the freeway. And you can see the very different configuration of areas four and five, as instead of being north-south oriented, they're east and west oriented. Because three is entirely north of the freeway, it goes north, farther north than it does in the other map, and so area one pushes over and to the east, and area two does not come up nearly as high as it did in the original, in the green map.
And we have not received any public comments on this map either with regard to, it has been posted on the website, et cetera, but we haven't received any comments. Just moving forward really quickly, I'll note that we have conducted, we have completed an outreach summary report, which I believe you have, which lays out all of the, frankly, in great detail, the same information that I'm presenting right now. If the community would like to see that outreach report, they are welcome to at the website that we've been using, the microsite for this formation process. And so, next steps, the Board will now deliberate, and then it, the approved map will go before the County Committee at two different hearings, one here at a boardroom, in the boardroom at a, at a date that will be determined later, and also another hearing at Laco. Usually that's during the day, sometime in the morning. So with that, we invite you, Board, to, to give some thought and to deliberate and pick a map.
Okay. Are there any questions for them? Mr. Palia?
Sorry?
Any questions for them?
No, just, great job, Valerie.
Thank you.
Awesome job. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And then, of course, there is the public comment component.
Right. Any questions, Mr. Vionis?
Oh, none for me, thank you.
Is there any secrets? No questions? Okay. So then, Dr. Zuniga, any public comments?
Yeah, at this time, the public is open, the floor is open to the public if anyone wishes to comment. Public hearing process, anyone?
If you do have any comments for this public hearing, you can come up to the podium. Anybody? Okay. Yeah, if you can come up to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I heard you make comment about the V-Dish thing in our community.
If you can give us your name, please?
My name is Christian. My name is Christian Tegeloff.
Thank you.
So basically, I've been attending the LA County Redistricting Committee meetings and learning the process of how, what it is actually, and on the history of it too. And according to my research that I've been acknowledged of, is that there's a lot of issues about redistricting. You know, I know that they're, they're saying about, that they don't do remandering or jurisdiction remandering, you know, but there, there actually is, the, the actual demographic or the data, it talks about race, it talks about Latinos, it talks about Asians, it talks about blacks and whites and that. Okay, but why is it, why are you even identifying that in that way if they're actually discriminating the, the, the whole purpose of, of doing all that? Because that's actually unconstitutional because they're identifying people as color. And also, the, the point is that what is constitutional is a census. Yes, we do have to do a census every 10 years, but the, as far as redistricting and identifying people by their race and color and their, with, their, their financials, you know, matter or whatever, their status, it's unconstitutional. You know, so by, by, by creating this is basically like, you, we all have a job in our community to work together, you know? By separating each district, by each, each board member, it just creates more work for that person in that area, you know? And we've got to look at this in the long term. If you approve this type of thing, is, is that that area will vote for its own representative in that area. It's like creating its own city. It's creating its own separation, its own, its own school, its own high school, I mean. So it's, to where I see it, maybe I need more information about it, but I look at it as a long term. And also too, in the history of what, what these effects have created. So I have here, there's Garza versus County of Los Angeles, 1918 FD 2D 763, there's a Ninth Circuit, and 1990 was a lot, I guess, a lawsuit. So identifying the, since 1959, intentional discrimination against Latino community. In 1965, intentional discrimination against Latino community. In 1971, intentional discrimination against Latino community. 1981, intentional discrimination against Latino community. 1990, intentional discrimination against Latino community. 2001, redistricting under supervision of the United States DOJ, Department of Justice. Also, 2010, redistricting plan approved over objections. Fourth vote provided to expedite federal court action. So Garza versus County of Los Angeles. So for decades, the county intentionally fragmented the Hispanic population among the various districts in order to dilute the effect of the Hispanic vote in future elections and preserve incumbencies of the Anglo members of the Board of Supervisors. When the dust has settled and local passions have cooled, this case will be remembered for its lucid demonstration that elected officials engaged in single-minded pursuit of incumbency can run roughshod over the rights of the protected minorities. The record is littered with telltale signs of reapportionments going back at least as far as 1959, were motivated to no small degree by the desire to assure that no supervisory, supervisory district would include too much of the bargaining Hispanic population. And that information is actually on the LA County Board, LA County Redistricting Committee website. You go to it and it goes, a lawyer spoke up on this, talking about this type of, the, whatever it is, you know? But we're, we're, we're Almani Union High School, Union, with all our high schools. We all have our job, you know? We, we have a responsibility to serve not only the baseball leagues that provide the, the athletes to, to the high school organization, the high school departments, you know, and also football communities, the football organizations that, that provide those students, athletes to, to the high school too, you know? And also to the, the, the Catholic schools. We have our Catholic elementary schools, Nativity, Nativity and Epiphany, you know, which are in the district, and those students also go to the high schools too, you know? So, but when they're, they're segregated and separated and all this stuff's going on, by, by, by segregating the people in a way, on the programs and, and the social service programs and everything kind of gets in whack, you know? We've got to take care of everything as a whole, you know? Just because they're, they're, they're white, or because they're Asian, or because they're black, or because they're Mexican or Guatemalan, whatever they, they're trying to do is, is anti-American. It's not American, it's unconstitutional, you know? And, and we have a right and we have a duty to, to defend the Constitution and to defend those rights of the people, you know? Especially since we've, we worked all our lives. My parents have worked extremely, extremely in the union, you know, with the, with the union, and basically paying taxes to the city, you know? Paying taxes to the schools, the high schools, you know, all those different services that, that's been there. And now it's separating the, those resources, you know, the separating, you know, I mean, if you look at the, this side of Almani, you have brand new schools. You go to this side of Almani, there's nothing but schools that have been built since the 1800s that they haven't even been remodeled, you know? Like there's still been, there's, 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 there's schools that, that need a lot of upgrading, you know? And, and also too, the, it's, it's because of the poverty level, you know, that, that's in those areas and, but it's in the same city. So I've always been investigating this type of, this type of work, this type of funding, you know, I'm really, I'm, 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 I'm really big on human rights, you know, and, and to, to make sure that we, we, as, 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 as members of leaders, you know, in the community, identify those issues and do our best to enforce those laws that are not only federal, federal laws, but it's common law. Common law to our, to our country, common law to the people, and international law too. You know, there's, there's, there is, there is a, an international human rights amendment that, that basically states about identifying people within their jurisdiction, you know, that, that's, that is illegal. You know, it's, it's, it's a violation of human rights to actually do that. You know, when, when you're identifying, when you identify those, those issues that, that are basically using these certain tools that, that not only make a big impact on our, on our, on law enforcement, you know, their, their, their laws, but also the, the, the CDC, you know, the CDC, if you go to the website, it identifies one of the most important issues in our, not just our health, what is our health? Our, the most important health issue is racism. Racism is the, the main, because of the way they race, they're, they're, they're looked on, you know? And that creates a, a way of depression or pushed out or, you know, like I said, they're, they're poor people over here, or Mexicans over here, or white people over here, you know? It brings a, your, their emotions, your feelings, everything kind of gets in that, in that, let's see, effect, you know?
Do you want to start wrapping up a little bit?
All right. So basically.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make the connections as to how it, your comments apply to the, this particular public hearing.
Okay.
So if we could stick to that, your three minutes are up, so if you can give us a quick summary?
Okay. Well, basically, like I said, the, if you go to the redistricting of the LA County, it shows, it shows the, the intentional discrimination against Latino communities, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's a big fact, you know? And we should investigate more into the details of this type of work and that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You dropped your phone.
Anybody else wishing to make a public hearing?
Oh, fine, thank you.
Comment? Public hearing comment? Thank you, see none. With that, I believe we amended our agenda to move straight to F 11 and 12. So F 11 is considering approval of resolution number 32 dash 21 slash 22, adopting a trustee area map and initiating a proposal to the LA County Committee of School District Organization to approve the Almani Union High School District's transition to bi-trustee area elections. So we need to pick a final map. So let's open the discussion and get some recommendations from fellow board members as to, we have three in front of us. We have yellow two, the orange, and green three. Should we start by narrowing it down to two? And maybe identifying one that just we can all agree on, we can get rid of?
President Soto, another option would be if anybody wishes to motion to approve a specific map and then take a vote?
Yeah, I, I just thought if we can make it a little bit easier by deleting one and then just having a discussion on two of them, that that might be a little bit easier. And I know all three is, is pretty tough, but. Any comments, Mr. Padilla?
No comments. I welcome any map.
Okay. Mr. Stella Torres de Seguris?
I think that I, I do spend use and then vote for me. Thank you. The yellow two, the yellow two map and also the green three map.
Okay.
Those are the two ones that I didn't, I didn't, that I commented with that too.
Okay.
Dr. Zuniga yesterday.
So you like those two? Okay.
Those two.
Yeah. I like the yellow two as well. Well, I don't think anybody's sharing which ones they hate the most, so do we have a motion to select one of the maps?
I dislike yellow two the most. Or say I hate it, but I dislike it.
Did you make a motion?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with any of them as well, but you dislike yellow two? Yeah, I'm okay with it. Anyone else?
I mean, we've heard one individual express that they were in support of yellow two. Another individual expressed that they were okay with.
Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Bionis?
You were three, well, I'm getting to that.
I know you are.
I just want to reiterate.
Because I don't think I'm getting a taker as far as my process, so.
So, yeah, I will move, I will move that we adopt green three, as well as that trustee areas three, four, and five be up for election in 2022, and areas one and two be up for election in 2024, which would keep us on the same cycle. So green three and then three, four, and five be up this year in 2022.
Do we have a second?
A second now.
Comment? Okay. Any comments? Any discussion for green three?
Mr. Bionis, you are on, yeah, you, you agreed to have the green three map? That's the one that you, that you think that you are.
That's his motion, yes.
That's your motion?
My motion is to, for us to adopt green three as our final map with trustee areas three, four, and five to be elected in 2022, and trustee areas one and two to be elected in 2024. And that keeps us all on the same cycle.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that for NDC orange, last time, you know, with the board adopted criteria, that's been shared with us multiple times now. I think this is the only map that reflects all the things that we wanted on there, including not having two board members share district. The other ones all have, you know, two board members sharing one trustee area. So I just want to uplift that, that was one of the comments that they found in the, as part of the community feedback. I'm fine with green two as well, though, but just want to uplift that orange is the only one, sorry, to be clear, green three?
Green three.
Green three.
Green three, yeah.
Yeah, so you're not rescinding your second? Your, okay. All right. Okay. So now here, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So it looks like it was a green three.
Congratulations.
Okay.
That's a worth process, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to, to NDC and to VMA for your, your work in putting all this together for us over the last, gosh, year now. Our thanks to you, Valerie, and your team, to, to NDC. Please give our thanks to Dr. Levitt for his work on this as well. You know, it's, it's a very laborious process and, you know, we've reached the, at least on our end, the end of our process, now we go to county committee.
So that was F 11, and now we go on to F 12.
President Soto, if I may, before we move on, if we could do another motion to formally approve the resolution itself and take a vote?
Oh, I thought that was all inclusive.
With green three will be inserted as.
So now considering F 11, the resolution, which I had previously read, can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Now we move on to F 12, and that's consider approval of resolution number 33, 21 slash 22, requesting the LA County Committee on School District Organization approve the Almani Union High School District transition to bi-trustee area elections pursuant to Senate Bill SB 442.
Move to approve item number 12.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. And now we move back to number two, student board member communication. Do we have anything in writing, Dr. Zuniga, from her?
Unfortunately, we, we were not able to get any information today.
Okay, so let's move on to superintendent announcements.
Okay, there is a presentation that I'd like to provide for you. Adrian can help me out with the, start that up. As we begin the superintendent's update, I just wanted to, again, commend our district and site teams for their ongoing work to address the pandemic, to address COVID. We thought it would, it was going to get easier as we, you know, progressed through the school year of 2122. Unfortunately, the anticipated winter break and knowing that there was a risk of increase of cases over the winter break, it definitely hit us, not only Almani Union, but as you can see it throughout the news across the nation. Obviously, the world reacts different and responds different, but it, it definitely hit home. And at Almani Union High School District, we have been working to at least keep up with the conditions that we're facing under the pandemic and the surge. So I'd like to go over it with you and then provide you some information that was relevant to our, our students and our staff, specific to our data as well. So go ahead and see if it moved the right way. Okay, there we go. So reopening of schools for Janu- January 2022, the winter surge, as I mentioned to you, severely impacted how we responded and we returned to campus. We were hoping to, you know, get a fresh start at winter break, but unfortunately, that took a quick spin. Quarantine, isolation, tracking, and more. And my next word would be oh my, because that was the case, it was an overwhelming experience the first two weeks of January. Some of you who are educators can also relate to that through your old school, the district, as staff return back. As you know, that there was also conversation about delaying the start of the winter break. And for us, we felt that we would be prepared and knowing that a lot of our students are vaccinated, though that didn't stop, you know, COVID cases, it did help us kind of get through January, as we're, as we've seen. At-home test kits were distributed, and as I mentioned to you earlier as well, that we were one of the first districts to receive those test kits from the state, quickly distributed those on day two, returning back onto campus in January. Unfortunately, with the distribution triggered more case findings, right? When the kids receive their test kits and were asked to make sure that they get their performance and take the, take the test. As a result, a surge and, and increase of those cases did return, causing more of the contract tracing exposure and reporting of those cases as well. The attendance rates obviously declined in January. We even saw students start returning the first day of school. So we did take note, we did a report on that first day, and we saw at least a 10% approximately decrease from what we have seen in past months in attendance as well. And I'll show you some, a little bit more of attendance in the future. And then last but not least, we began our mandated testing for our undocumented students. It did take some time with coordination and also working with our testing partners, FullGen, because they were also dealing with staffing issues as we requested an increase. Uh, as we requested an increase in testing time throughout the week for our schools to ensure that there was enough time, sufficient time to get our kids tested and also our staff tested as required for staff as well. Going back and then starting all over with the California tracking, uh, we do see some good signs here. This is actually data as of today. Most importantly, if you look at that last one, we're test, the positivity rate has declined since we've seen it early in the surge in December and then on to it. So we are seeing a downward trend and hopefully seeing a plateau of the surge. So that will definitely, uh, that definitely is a good sign, and we're hoping February will continue down that downward slope as well. Uh, unfortunately, uh, deaths continue and the death, uh, photo is actually rising over the past eight weeks still. And that's not good there, uh, but with the test positivity rate, hopefully that brings good news in the future. For LA County, if we look at that, again, the daily reported percent of COVID cases, and this was the last update on January twenty-fifth, the past seven-day average, you see also a downward slope. Uh, but if you take a look at what happened, you know, back in November and in December, uh, January definitely hit us at the, and even the tail end of December with the holiday season over. Uh, they weren't kidding around with looking at the potential surge over the winter break, and we did see it. But again, what the data is telling us is that the rates are declining, uh, in LA County as aligned to what the state is seeing too. So that is definitely some good news there. Uh, I, I looked at the slide as a opportunity for us to look at what's happening at schools, right? So you have those, uh, three colors there, one for student cases, one for non-instructional staff, and also the instructional staff cases as well. Uh, the red little, uh, arrow on the left side, week of, of January seventeenth, that's the last recorded date. Um, that actually is a good sign compared to the one next to it. Look at the, the highest, the longest one, which is a week prior. So we are seeing that trend, but, uh, this actual data goes back to November twenty-twenty. Those little, little lines that you see November twentieth compared to January twenty-twenty-two, uh, i- i- it's actually a telling story about what, what we've been through in the last, I would say, eight weeks now, if you count December and January. So this whole entire community and this world has been, uh, definitely impacted by Omicron. The local vaccination rates by districts and community, what I wanted to show the board is looking at, how do we compare to the vaccination rates between the ages of twelve to eighteen years old when it comes to other local districts and communities? So what the county has, is able to provide is the number of students that are vaccinated, uh, now, uh, according to the data and in, uh, comparison around the local communities. Uh, the unique thing about our district is we are a uni- union high school district. So how they're reported is they put us alongside our partner schools. So you have four reporting percentages for Almonte Union, right? The, the ninety-four-nine percent, the first one, is from Rosebead School District and our school. So those are our kids that live in the Rosebead School District area. For the Ma'view School District area, those are our students between the ages of twelve and eighteen, but also includes probably some seventh and eighth graders, right? But that is about eighty-four percent, and then Almonte City is about almost eighty percent there. Our lowest is seventy-point-seven percent. That's by Lendo students, that's the smallest population, obviously, but, okay, the smallest district, but it still represents a lot of our kids, uh, that are still in that percentile. And, um, you're going to see another slide that shows also that even the schools, our high schools, that kind of makes sense after you look at this data about what, what our rates are with our schools as well. Um, Whiter Union has the same thing. They have different areas. So you look and see, you can see how we compared to those percentages down there at the bottom when it comes to that. So kudos to some of those districts that are, you know, making every effort to, you know, provide vaccination opportunities to their communities. And, uh, proud to say that, you know, our district also is pretty up there when it compares to some of the neighboring surrounding communities and school districts as well. For LA County cases in K-12 schools, I think I covered this one, but I think I went backward. There we go. Uh, so reported COVID-nineteen cases here. So this is another telling story about what happened prior to the winter break and what happened after winter break.
Wow.
So when you compare the yellow area, that is the start of the school year up to when we left on December seventeenth. And I want to give you an example. For example, the Royal High School data. So from August to December seventeenth, we had twenty-six cases overall. That's about one-point-two percent of the population. The left side, which is the light blue side, that is, um, from the time we got back from winter break through January thirtieth, or combined all the way through, right, from the start of the school year all the way through January thirtieth. So it's about another month as we, as we look at it. So that quickly went from twenty-six total cases from the start of the school year up to December to three-hundred-and-eleven total reported cases at the end of January. That's a significant jump from one-point-two percent of the population to fifteen-point-one-nine percent that had reported cases, positive cases for COVID. Uh, so you could also see the other schools, how they've, they've compared, uh, from our, our comprehensive high schools, which have the majority of our population here as well. So, uh, major difference from what we've seen from the first couple of months go to January. Our student vaccination status here, this provides us a, a overview of the majority of students in our district, our comprehensive high schools. And we still have the four categories, and I'll explain to you. On that first row there, the fully vaccinated, that is a percentage of students that we have according to synergy that have been memorialized and recorded and proved that, uh, these students are fully vaccinated. Uh, again, a Royal High School, ninety-three percent, and then you see the other schools around eighties to also ninety percent too. So again, uh, proud of the efforts, uh, opportunities for our students to get vaccinated and also keeping up with the data and tracking of how many kids are fully vaccinated. Our partially vaccinated is a, is a small percent. Uh, I'm also proud to say that the work over the last two to three weeks of pushing those students who only received their first vaccination, and they had received their first vaccination even in December and November, and they never came back. So what we did personally, as we met with those individual students, we provided, um, that you could still get your second dose. You don't have to start all over. Uh, there is, there is a protocol that, you know, allows you to get your vaccine no matter what. You just have to, uh, get it done. So we allowed them to, you know, be informed, because there was rumors about that, well, I have to start all over because, you know, you know, I waited too long. No, that's not true. But you had to educate our students and our families that it's not true that get it done to get your second dose and to get fully vaccinated. Uh, so the remaining unvaccinated, uh, the percents are there. I think the highest one is at Almonte High School at eight percent of student population that remained unvaccinated. And then Rosebead High School has about one percent according to our records. Uh, what we're still challenged with is the ongoing follow-up of, of the, the students that are either not partially vaccinated or they said they made their appointment and their families, rest assured, are, are going to get vaccinated. So we're working to reduce that number. But the combined with the partially vaccinated, remaining vaccinated, ongoing follow-up, those are the students that are testing now weekly because they're unvaccinated according to the definition of not being fully vaccinated. Uh, attendance. So when we did this breakdown for the month of January, we did a four-year, uh, attendance. So if you look at the top one, it's the two-thousand-eighteen-nineteen in blue, nineteen-twenty in orange, and then in the gray is twenty-twenty-one. Um, the gray is the distance learning year. Remember that, right? So the other two are kind of similar because that is common with in-person, kind of a non-pre-COVID time period. Uh, they're all within the mid-to, mid-to-high ninety percentile as well. So in the yellow part, the bottom, it's the month of January and two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're looking at last month, right? So you saw that significant drop across January from the schools. And each of those points means one of the schools that are on top. For example, uh, Ma'view High School dropped significantly down to eighty-one percent during the month of January. We have never seen that before, uh, so we knew that this would be impacted as well. And our first thought is, well, we're, you know, what the status of the students. And our second thought is, how does, how will this will long-term affect on our ADA or recording too? So those are, uh, two things that first came to mind as well, and making sure the well-being of our students, followed by how does this impact the school year with ADA?
Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, sir.
Just seeing those numbers, seeing that, that dramatic drop in attendance in January. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that with the, it looks like the, the surge now reaching its peak and it's starting to diminish. We don't see that again, but, I mean, this may be an opportunity for us to reach out to the legislature and see if there's, there's an opportunity for, for, um, a bill to, for, to hold, uh, school districts harmless.
Waive it.
I don't think this was anticipated. I think most of us thought that the numbers would continue to, to drop and things would get back to normal. And then Omicron variant arrived and things did not return to normal. In fact, they got significantly worse. I, I know for twenty, 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 twenty-one, it was in the, the, the emergency bills that were passed then to hold schools, hold school districts harmless.
Right.
Because we really had no control. And I think this may be a conversation we need to have because I, I'd hate to, to lose any amount of ADA for something that's completely out of our control. And this is, this is completely out of the ordinary. I mean, yeah, we do have challenges as it relates to attendance, but this is, uh, this is a significant drop.
I agree.
And who knows the future variants?
The preliminary report or the budget proposal from the governor did provide a few ideas, a few options. Uh, and I know some of us attended about a three-year average about waiving it from, uh, including it from the last year's and not this year's or two years ago. So it's gonna be beneficial if we all are on the same page about pushing this agenda when it comes to CSPA Legislation Day, about ensuring that, you know, that does not impact funding for schools in the future. Michelle, so you ever add anything to that?
Yes, uh, the governor, uh, preliminary budget tried to address the issue by suggesting to take this three previous years' average, uh, of, uh, ADA attendance. Uh, but that would be very difficult because the previous years, the previous year is also impacted. So, uh, so I think there is a drive, uh, to actually look into other, other options and suggestions. And I believe, uh, school districts are mobilizing to lobby for, uh, a relief for a waiver, uh, ADA waiver for this year.
And I know Senator Portantino has a bill, um, that would change the, the funding formula to our, our enrollment as opposed to ADA.
In lieu of ADA.
Um, I mean, I, I don't know if there would, there's an opportunity for that to be retroactive to this year or we don't, but I mean, regardless, we definitely need to have conversations with our legislators because this is going to impact us significantly.
Right, and especially in underserved communities.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that's built this state. Uh, it, and looking at that data, it, it severely impacts underserved communities with ADA who have lower ADA during these times.
Yeah, that, that's a loss of about like one-point-five million dollars or more.
Right. Yeah, definitely.
I mean, just in, in my day job, it was one-point-three million. And, uh, you know, I, I've done this for twenty-nine years. I've never seen, this was the first time in all that time that, uh, nobody reached ninety percent or higher in month five. I mean, it was just crazy. Everybody was in the eighties.
Yep.
So, yeah, and it was, uh, and, and I know that in both our district and the neighboring district, a one percent drop is, is right there, a million dollars.
Yeah, the, the good news is that the governor budget does acknowledge that this is an issue that need to be addressed. Now, the final, uh, budget probably would, uh, would involve some, uh, negotiations with, uh, with the legislation and the governor. So, uh, at least they are aware that this is an issue that they need to address. And it definitely will impact the district significantly if they do not address it.
I, I know when we have our legislator, if you had the legislator here, what would be your top three? I know we can't fix everything, but would we harp on this or would we go for the full and fair funding? And then what would be your top three as a CBO if you had Portantino or Senator Rubio or Assemblywoman Rubio or? Who would, what would your top three be?
Well, this is definitely would be on the top three, uh, probably number one, because it has a major. Yes, it has a direct impact on our, uh, uh, funding. And then the, the, probably the second is also special education funding would be the second one, uh, obviously. And then also the enrollment, uh, drop due to, uh, I, I believe COVID. So the, the, the district is declining enrollment, but the, the rate of declining is, has been, uh, increased because of COVID.
I would also add the stirs and purges impact that we're going to continue to see, which I don't think I believe the governor introduced any additional relief for stirs and purges moving forward, right?
Yes, the one thing that is going for the school district is that the, the state budget is going, is doing very well. So the amount, the obligated amount that they have to spend, uh, for schools is thirty-eight percent of the state budget. So, and the school di- districts in the state are declining, all of them are declining. So it end up happening is that, that districts will receive more funding per, per, uh, per pupil, per student because of that. But it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big issue and, and, and it definitely need to be addressed lo- long-term.
So if we talk to our legislator about declining enrollment, I mean, how would they fix that for us?
Well, it's, you know, the, the, the fact that Proposition Ninety-Eight's require, uh, the state to spend certain percentage, thirty-eight percent of its budget on schools. And the fact that majority of the school districts in California are declining, including the overall number of, of students in California declining, this mean that the districts will get more per ADA even though they are declining enrollment. So that could up, uh, offset some of the loss in the revenue by having an increase per ADA. But I think the, the bigger issue is that, and we did receive, by the way, our preliminary Davis demographic projections. And it doesn't look very good because we continue, it looks like we continue to decline. Uh, they are actually showing that the district, uh, total enrollment by twenty-seven, twenty-eight will decline to be about sixty-four hundred students.
So we'll be getting less money unless we increase the ADA per child?
Yes, but the challenge is, is that the decline is all over the, uh, the state. So it's, you know, it's not like you have a school district having, stealing school, students from another. So it's a actual decline. It's a natural decline because there is a reduction in, uh, in the number of, uh, uh, birth rates and so forth.
Right, and how would the state legislator help us? You said special ed, I heard you. That's more of a federal issue. How could the state assist us or help us with our special ed? It's, it's currently funded at what, seventy percent or what percentage do we get funded for every child that we have on an IEP?
Actually, that this, the, the, I believe the number right now is about forty percent.
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
So how can our state help with that when we have our legislator before us or we visit or virtually or in person? But how can they help us in the state with special ed?
Well, the, and I believe that the governor is, uh, is also trying to address this issue, realizing that the cost of, uh, uh, providing services for special education is more expensive. So he's allocating more of the dollars to special education students. I think that we need to do more as a, as a state to allocate more dollars to the special education to reflect the reality of, of the cost of services that need to be provided for special education.
So all of our thirty percent comes from the state or in combination with state and feds, thirty percent?
The, the, it's a combination, you know, it's, it's a combination. But, uh, you know, the, uh, and, you know, the federal, the federal government can definitely also address that, that issue as well. So it's, it's not just only lobbying for the state, but also.
Thirty percent for special ed, thirty, is that what you said, or forty, thirty or forty?
I believe it's about forty percent at this point in time.
I can hear you.
It's a forty percent. I believe that, that this.
Okay, got it. So more or less. And what per, what percent comes from feds and what percent comes from state more or less?
Uh, maybe, you know, David, do you have any answer for that?
It, it, it's about equals a little bit more on the, on the, uh, on the fed side at this point. So when we combine our local and state, local and state will exceed that amount, but not by a whole lot. So they're nearly equal, a little bit more on the local and state side.
So the state gives more than the feds?
Combined with the local, the state by itself, no, with feds, we're getting a bit more, yes, by, by a good portion, yeah.
bit more, yes. By, by a good portion, yeah.
So give me a percent, more or less. You said it's forty percent.
So I'm gonna say it's probably sixty, forty right now. Is that, so fed versus state?
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So as I bring to you this presentation, the update is the challenges that we have faced. And I think you, you already know some of these things that I'm gonna mention. The ongoing changes to the LEDPH protocol that we were, we were hit pretty strong by ongoing changes, modifications within the last four weeks. So had our head spinning, but we had to respond, uh, if we wanted to keep up with those protocols. I, I am going to admit that those protocols did alleviate some of the work that our staff and our administrators were doing from the get-go when we got back from January. So I do wanna, uh, thank, uh, LEDPH for doing that. Uh, they wanted to make sure that we, that we, they addressed our concerns in January about the overwhelming, uh, exposures and COVID case, case monitoring that we had to deal with. Uh, so the exposure in the classroom setting and managing case reporting too, as I mentioned, that, that was alleviated, but it still was a challenge in taking away from our focus on instruction. Students understanding of exposure and close contact protocols, not only educating our families and kids about what does that mean when you're exposed? Does that mean I'm a close contact or I've been exposed? Is it in the classroom? Is it, you know, within six feet or fifteen minutes, you know, within a day of school? So having to educate our families and our students and even our staff at times has also been challenging because we're also trying to keep up with those changes and educate our child and go through the notification that we receive on an ongoing basis. Uh, and also completing a two-dose vaccination for students who are partially vaccinated. We have found that that has been a challenge. We've also were able to identify a lot of those, um, kids and make that contact too. But nevertheless, you could provide vaccine, vaccination clinics. You could do everything you've been, possibly you're able to do, but they have to show up. We gotta get those kids to complete their vaccination cycle so that we become fully vaccinated as well. And then a myriad of misinformation on social media and, and other unreliable sources that people are pointing out on a daily basis is also, it, it works against us sometimes when we're trying to, uh, put the information out there for our families while we're out there also, let, let us know what they're hearing outside too. And then last but not least, the timing of at-home test kits for the inventory. Uh, once the surge came, we had a very challenging time finding, uh, at-home kits to continue providing those to our, our staff and our students from the, when the surge started in January. And I'll talk a little bit about it. We did get new good news after, but we did receive them at the end. Uh, as you know, that we just had our last vaccine, uh, last one on January twenty-ninth, we had a hundred, we had ninety-three, close to a hundred participants. That's good news. Um, unfortunately, a lot of them were adults for fifty-four, uh, uh, I see, what, what, close to seventy boosters. And then we also had about, um, first and second dose, uh, students between ages of five, way of seventeen to get their actual, uh, second dose and first dose too. But nevertheless, ninety-three is better than none at all, right? So I know, understand that other school districts, Montu School District is, is doing theirs as well. I think they have one tonight as a matter of fact. And we've also been informed by others, all of our cities, cities that they're providing opportunities to, even though Sessor had a date on Sunday to have vaccines out in South Almonte too. So it is a community effort to make sure that we provide those to our families and our students. So efforts made to support sites, what we do here at the district office, we revise those protocols that are district protocols from the county. We provide those updates, including those notices that go out to kids every day and to go out to schools. And also the memos to staff to keep them informed, that allows our students and families to district-wide communication. Uh, we increased testing. We went from two to three hours a day at sites to a full day at our comprehensive high schools to ensure that those unvaccinated students have enough time to get tested because it does take time to coordinate that. Uh, we do PCR testing for those students. Uh, the at-home test kits, we finally were able to get at the end of the month, approximately seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty test kits provided. So we have now a, a, a strong inventory of those test kits. And our goal is to, uh, hand the test kits out as needed, but also as we get through the next couple holidays, right? We have, uh, two weekend holidays. We have the Super Bowl coming up. We have spring break, you know, in April. So we wanna make sure that that inventory is provided to students.
Yeah.
Uh, to make sure that they are tested prior to coming back after a long weekend holiday too. And definitely can help us. Uh, additional hours provided for our support staff for vaccination records, coordination of testing schedules to support administrators. So those LBNs and other office staff that, uh, are needed, we're providing those hours to make sure that gets done. Our district dashboard is updated daily. So if you go to the website, you'll see the dashboard of how many numbers by day that we had, all the way from day one of school. Uh, case reporting to county provided by the district office, we alleviated that from the site. So Mr. Saris, every night, she sends out that report to the county. And here's our cases for the day. Uh, ongoing meetings with our site admin. We met, uh, with, uh, principals and assistant principals today to talk about athletics, talk about performing arts, talk about questions that they had that, you know, we need to make sure that they, they, they're, they're, they're able to respond to them, provide them direction. And then last but not least, a couple of things, uh, response to county inquiries and recommendations related to school outbreaks. So, for example, uh, we had outbreaks for wrestling. We had some outbreaks in basketball. That means you had more than four, four cases within a team. So the county comes, they evaluate your facility. They look at the gym. They see the airflow. Is the airflow strong enough? They make recommendations. And one of the, one of the recommendations that was made at one of our schools is that the airflow in the gym is not sufficient. So even with having those doors open, so they recommended to have, uh, floor fans or flow blowers to make sure that the air is circulating, especially in the center of the gymnasium. So we went ahead and purchased the air blowers to ensure that, you know, all the schools had them, not just the school that actually was visited. We provided those air blowers, uh, to make sure that it was happening at all their school sites. Because we know if it happens at one school site, it's gonna happen at others and it, and has already. Um, I know that there's the one at the end, ongoing outreach and vaccination opportunities. That's something that I just covered with that as well. So those are updates for January. Um, I, a lot of data we'll share with you this evening, but, uh, I know that, uh, the staff here at the district as well as the sites continue to work through these things while try to also focus on a regular day at school as well. So that's my update for the board, Mr. President.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay, so we move on to the consent and, uh.
The students that are already vaccinated, do they have to be tested when they come to school?
No. The only ones that are required to be, uh, tested on a weekly basis are the students who are, are unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated. Uh, we are looking and exploring on pool, pool testing. That means that it would include classrooms that you have students that are vaccinated, unvaccinated, that are randomly selected weekly. Uh, so for example, pool testing means that I have a group that goes in, tests all the kids and the teacher at one time, and then the tests are taken to the lab, and then I, I identify any student that has tested positive in that classroom, that we respond and we pull the student out and then, you know, go through the same process as contract tracing and everything.
And do we do it every week?
So we would be doing that weekly. Uh, we're exploring, uh, vendors that do pool testing because it does require a company to take the test because you don't, what you don't wanna do is interrupt instruction. So what they do is within a, a short period of time, test all the students at the same time and then leave the classroom but get the results later on.
Yes.
And then they, we get the information based on that identified classroom.
And do you give, give the information, uh, like twenty minutes later or the same day?
No, they, they would, it would be probably a twenty-four hour turnaround.
Oh, it's twenty-four.
That would require that. Because they, they are, they are taken to the lab.
And you let them know their parents right away?
Yeah. Uh, we also know that testing in California for students that wish to be tested, uh, twelve and, twelve and up, they are allowed to be tested. Uh, and the students can test for themselves too and in the state. Because we did, uh, seek legal opinion on that about students who wanna get tested. And one of the things that has, um, delayed a lot of testing is that we, prior to that, the start of the school year, we required, you know, make sure the parents have the consent form and everything else. So it further delayed the process too. So we wanted to make sure that kids who wanna get tested are able to get tested. But we also try to practice that parents should get the results, get be informed that your child wants to be tested, et cetera. So we try to carry both ends, even, even if it, even if like it's legal to be testing under twelve and up. But parents also play a significant role in supporting the testing as well sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Suni, Dr. Suni.
So do you have any items, Senator?
Uh, no.
You don't?
No, my question's unanswered. Thank you.
Um, the support of the seats.
Yes, I have one question, number five.
None for me.
Number five.
Yes, right.
No, no question.
Okay, it's number five. Okay, what is that? The meaning of B E E S A F. What is that association?
That's the organization that we contract with for parent engagement. That's a contracted at additional hours, the company we work with. Is that what you're talking about? We're talking about number five? Five, yeah.
The parent education is the between a, 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 the extra hours that we want with them and extra workshops because we want to continue providing for our families the workshops they're asking for and to meet them where they need to be met. So there you go.
That's the one thing. Okay, thank you.
Send us a copy of the, I think Mrs. Professor Torres de Sequeira has the menu. So that they you could either do it à la carte and you could just pick the ones you want, or they have like a full comprehensive. But they, uh, Pevsoft, um, what is the program that we use that came after Take Note? If you recall, the previous one was Take Note, and this was far superior to Take Note. I mean, this was very comprehensive and uh,
Very reasonable.
If you see the menu, it'll it'll answer all your questions of like, oh, they have this and that.
Yeah, it's like a big menu. It's like a restaurant menu. It's like, you want this, this is what it costs. So it's great.
Yeah.
Hey?
I don't think I was gonna add to that because I know there's a link there.
You need like a red cardboard.
Mm-hmm.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Um, I know there's a link there that takes you back to the original post. But I think uh, um, it would probably help us if we get a like, you know, on Friday memo, hey, this is coming up. Oh, yeah, here's some sample of what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Because that little hyperlink there is kind of small and, you know, you gotta know to go there to
I really like that.
read the the contract and all that and yeah.
I'll provide it this week's memo. Just to show you, you can see how the menu works and how we can have different choices.
I know that we are asking to you too much. You are sending me seven weeks something.
No, no, it's no problem.
But really, I really would like to have just a little information about this organization that is helping parents and students. That is really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Make maybe you could delegate it to all that ELD staff you have now. You know I'm not gonna.
I know. Do you have any questions? No. Okay, so we're gonna move to number ten. I have a quick question on this one. Um, and it is Mr. Cecil. And it it's just, um, what is it? Um, proposed conferences, participants. If we look at number four, Kenny Simpson's Gun Clinic. Is that a misprint or what are we looking at there?
I'm sorry, where are you looking at, President Cecilio?
Number ten.
Number ten?
Oh, that's actually a football clinic for football coaches.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I was looking at it and I'm like, what is this?
Does it relate to the fields?
Okay, so it's um.
Like shotgun.
Yeah, because the description just says to get PD, so it doesn't say football. It doesn't say anything.
Yeah, I'll I'll make sure it says we represent that next time.
Thank you. And then uh, number twelve. Um, I I just think this is uh important to kind of go kind of go over because we're approving the summer school, right? And we're gonna get a lot of questions about this. Um, one such question is we'll be holding a five-week summer school schedule.
Yes.
Uh, summer school will be five, a five-day school week.
Mm-hmm.
But some of the weeks are only four days.
Because you have holidays. You have Juneteenth and Fourth of July.
So June?
Twentieth.
Twentieth is the holiday?
Is a holiday, Juneteenth.
For Juneteenth, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other one is, okay.
The Fourth of July.
July, July.
All right. So those are, so can you give us just a quick summary of, you know?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Synchronous, you know, all that good stuff.
No, it's gonna be, okay, I'll give you, it's in person. We're gonna do similar to what we did last year, but it's five days a week except for those four, two, four we- weeks. And we decided we were gonna do it five weeks. We didn't want to go too long. We want to give our students and staff a break between summer school and school starts. Uh, we need to start the second week because uh, we have, we have our, you know, four, or three of our four feeder districts will end that week. Um, so we want to make sure we have that week break and so all our students start at the same time. We do plan on doing professional development, offering that optional for that week before summer school, prepare for it. And we will have student activities during that week also. Uh, but that's kind of, we'll have that week off and then we'll start the five weeks. It will be basically the same we did last year. You'll see there's two periods before lunch. That third period is optional. If a school has a need, they want, hey, we want to offer athletics, we want to offer PE. We want our band students, if we even have another need for another class. Um, we're not going to say no to the needs that the sites have when it comes to a third-period class. That's the optional one. That's where you talk about your extended summer school program. Along with that, we'll be having social-emotional workshops during that time, even afterwards. So we're gonna be, it's gonna be a robust. We're not saying no to any classes. We want to offer um, different types of programs during the day. We want to offer tutoring, mentoring during the day. A kid may have a first and third-period class during that second period. We want to offer other services for those students.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted, you know, there are some topics that I, you know, for the sake of, you know, it being heard out there and being reported out.
Absolutely.
I think this is one of those, so thank you for for sharing that.
No problem.
Um, and if there are no further questions on any items, uh, if I can add a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Okay, now we move to the regular agenda. F1, consider approval of change order number one with San Gabriel Valley Water Company for the Fernando Ladesma High School multipurpose room project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number two is consider approval of the release of retention from escrow account with Los Angeles Engineering, Inc. For the Rosemead, for Rosemead High School track and field replacement project, bid number twenty twenty dash twenty-one, B eleven.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number three is consider approval of the notice of completion for the Rosemead High School track and field replacement project, bid number twenty twenty dash twenty-one, B eleven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved.
Just with this one, uh, are we planning like a ribbon cutting, Dr. Zuniga?
We're hoping that the snack bars are complete, so it could be a combined ribbon cutting for both the track and field project as well as snack and bar, snack snack bar extensions, which are the new snack bars.
Maybe March.
That's taking the longest because of the the, I wouldn't say that, not the challenging, but it's a very unique project because of the container. So everything has to be customized. And I know, well, you probably have a little bit more details on that.
Yeah, there there are some uh items that are uh delayed.
Supply chain, yeah. So is it gonna, it looks like March, April, or May, which?
So I believe, I believe it should be, it should be delivered by sometime in March and the project would be finished by the end of March. That's actually, the meeting was today, earlier today, so.
Awesome.
Before spring break?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Gotcha. Number four, consider approval to enter into a contract with Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood LLP for arbitrage, uh, rebate and yield restriction compliance services.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number five is consider approval to award bid number twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two P sixteen E-rate funding uh, for year twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three of category one, services to Spectrum Enterprise and category two services to Development Group, Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number six, consider approval of independent contractor agreement between Ammoni Union High School District and Rosanna Alvidres to provide support and guidance with English learner programs and services.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, uh, no discussion, but I really was like, comments, please, comments. Uh, I really um think that the decision of asking her to come back is a great decision. I've known him for a long time and she's really a person who we really need it right now for helping our students. I really congratulate the uh, the superintendent and the group that decided to have it back because she's still very young. She still has a lot of energy and she has a lot, she wants to help our students. I really congratulate you. Thank you for choosing her. That was my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Torres de Sequeira. Um, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, so moved. Number seven, consider approval of contract agreement between the Ammoni Union High School District and the LA County Sheriff's Department uh, for school district law enforcement, enforcement services.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion or comments?
Just a couple of comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I won't be supporting this item. I've discussed this with Dr. Zuniga previous to tonight's meeting uh, and expressed my concerns. One of the two, one of two concerns first and foremost is the um, the rigidity of the contract. Um, I I I don't agree with just get being given a boilerplate contract um, and being asked to approve it without it being uh, amenable to our needs. Uh, number two, as part of this agreement, will be required to purchase um, police vehicles for the deputies that will be assigned to the schools. Um, because this is not going through the cities anymore, where they're hiring additional deputies. And then those deputies are listed as patrol deputies on paper, but in reality they're SROs. Um, now they'll be listed as SROs and the requirement with the sheriff's department is that the contracting agency, in this case, our school district, be required to provide vehicles for them. Um, I don't agree with spending any money on a police vehicle when there are needs directly in our classrooms that are continuing to go unmet, so I'll be voting no on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bionis.
It'd be cool if we can get them on bikes, huh? Give them like bikes instead.
If they want to bring bikes, as long as they pay for them, they can do whatever they want.
Electric bikes.
Electric, I was gonna say that.
Or like um, those golf carts, you know? Can we get them a golf cart, Dr. Zuniga said?
We can provide the golf cart if they work with us on that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Do we have a second on that already?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, uh, that was a four-one. So moved. Uh, number eight, consider approval resolution twenty-nine dash uh, twenty-one slash twenty-two authorizing Ammoni Union High School District to accept the California Energy Commission CalSHA grant award in the amount of one million three hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety.
Move to approve. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved.
Just a comment really quick. Just thank you to the Ammoni High School District staff uh, for applying to this grant and then getting this award. I think we continue to lead in environmental justice and being able to do this air quality monitoring. Um, particularly with di- carbon dioxide monitoring and filters for classrooms, so I just want to extend a thank you. It builds upon our current work with, you know, around sustainability and environmental education for our students and families, so thank you.
Yes, and I'm very happy that it also includes Ladesma High School. Okay. Uh, number nine is consider approval resolution number thirty dash twenty-one slash twenty-two in recognition of the Lunar New Year.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number ten, consider approval resolution number thirty-one uh, dash twenty-one slash twenty-two in recognition of Black History Month.
Move to approve.
Okay, um, Mr. Diaz, seconded. Uh, motion by Mr. Bionis. Um, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. And we skip over to thirteen. Number eleven, twelve are already being determined. Number thirteen is consider approval of contract between the Ammoni Union High School District and the Los Angeles County Office of Education to provide supplemental services to district employees.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. And number fourteen is consider approval memorandum of understanding between the Ammoni Union High School District and the Ammoni Union High School Dis- sorry. Consider approval memorandum of understanding between the Ammoni Union Educators Association and the Ammoni Union High School District in response to the district's coronavirus vaccination mandate.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, so moved. All right, so now let's move to uh, Board Member Communication Roundtable. Mr. Padilla? Okay, Mr. Bionis?
Uh, yes, just a couple of items. Uh, first, I wanted to provide an update to everyone from la- the last January board meeting where I uh, mentioned uh, the homeless count taking place in January. It uh, was postponed due to Omicron to February twenty-second. So individuals who are still interested, those are that are that are eighteen and older, um, can register to participate in the homeless count. Uh, and to those of you who have already registered, like Mr. Salcedo, thank you so much for for participating and uh, giving some of your time to those who who are um, unhoused. Uh, next item, I wanted to say thank you to Senator Susan Rubio for taking the time to meet with me uh, to discuss uh, items um, that are pertinent to our school district over the weekend. Um, and I really want to give her a special thank you because she took the meeting in her car uh, as she was leaving one event and was pulled over on the side of the road uh, when we were meeting via Zoom. So I wanted to say thank you to to her for for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts and my concerns um, and our needs really for our school district. Um, the other item is um, earlier this month, uh, I attended National School Board Association Equity Symposium in Washington DC as well as the Advocacy Institute, uh, and I had a really great time meeting um, board members from across, not only California, as we usually do with CSBA, but across the country. Um, and I believe I was the only school board member from California that 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 attended. Uh, so I was on my best behavior because I was representing the Golden State. Um, but it was a great uh, great event. The Equity Symposium really highlighted the need for folks as uh, as one presenter uh, stated to to our our uh, um, group to use your microphone. You know, make sure that you're advocating for your students, uh, make sure that you are discussing um, every program through a lens of equity. And so I uh, we had some really great presenters, including uh, Dr. Adolf Brown, who put on a, just an awesome presentation talking about um, the need to to listen to to the voices of our youth. Um, and to take action on some some of the items that are considered hot topics today, but in fact have been in discussion for decades at this point, including uh, a thesis that he wrote nineteen ninety-seven for his doctorate, um, talking about the experiences of African-American men and law enforcement. And this is a pertinent Congress, a pertinent discussion tonight, today. Um, yet it's something that he wrote about, you know, twenty-five years ago. Uh, so nevertheless, uh, you know, it was very inspiring. It was a great event. Um, and I also had the opportunity to meet with Congresswoman Napolitano, who's a Assistant Chief of Staff, Jerry O'Donnell, um, to talk about the needs of our school district, particularly for full funding for for special education. And we were having this discussion earlier tonight. Mr. Padilla was asking for numbers, and one of the things that really stood out to me is when the um, when IDEA was enacted into federal law in the nineteen seventies, the uh, promise made to school districts by the federal government was that they would fund forty percent of special ed uh, funding. And it's been uh, as high as fifteen percent and at some point in time, it's been as low as eight percent. And it's never hit forty percent. Uh, so it, you know, we had that discussion about our own needs and I shared stats about the uh, the amount of special ed students that we have in our district. Um, particularly as it relates to our declining enrollment, while we're having an increase in the number of students who are special, identified as special needs. Um, I also, I specifically spoke about, it's uh, HR fifty-nine eighty-four, which is IDEA Full Funding Act. Uh, Congresswoman Napolitano is a, is a co-sponsor to this bill. Um, so in talking to to Mr. O'Donnell, I expressed our support for this because, you know, obviously our students need to have, our special ed students need to be fully funded for the services that that they're um, entitled to receive. Uh, so I was happy to be able to to take that time and meet with him and and share our our story uh, on behalf of the district. And um, the last item I had. Uh, just a a general statement overall about um, NSBA and the Advocacy Institute. I think it's uh, the importance of uh, continuing to advocate on behalf of our students, not only at the state level, which we do on a regular basis, but also at the federal level. Sometimes we overlook the uh, the fact that, you know, the the laws that are in place uh, by by, that are made by Congress and signed by the president, have an impact on on our students. And you know, right now we're focused on COVID and SFR funds and um, and uh, you know, the Recovery Act. But there's still other funding that's uh, that is out there that we need to be advocating for, whether it's an increase in funding or an increase in services, or something as simple as making sure that, you know, administrative processes are streamlined so that it makes it easier for us as a school and parents to participate in certain federally funded programs. So I was uh, happy to participate in that and NSBA will be having their meeting in San Diego, uh, conference in San Diego in April. So I think it'd be a good idea to look into it to see if folks are interested in attending. And that's all for me tonight, Mr. President.
And with that, I think I have to get back to you on that, Alma, right? Yeah, I will. Um, Mrs. Torres de Sequeira?
Yes, uh, then this month we were going, uh, last month, we were going to attend the convention for the legislation in the, from the PTA, but it was canceled because of the pandemic. But we have a very interesting um, meeting where they talk about two important points that we have to take care of our students in high school and elementary school. One is nutrition. They were talking about the nutrition, which is very important that we give to our students. And the second one, it was an um, one commentary that the governor said that we had to start giving more important, a lot of importance to the um, to the special education, to the students. And he was going to pa- to give some money for helping more our students. Um, another part is that I attend the LACSTA meeting, which was very interesting. They were talking about the Brown Act. Two important points. I know that everybody, we know that, but it's a good idea to re- to remember all the time, to remind us that when we go to a closed session, whatever we try that there, it is totally against the law to publish or to talk about that outside of the room where we have the, the only with the board members. And the second is, they remind us that we have to follow in our meetings, we have to follow constantly the agenda as it is. Uh, yesterday, I attend the D-LAC, um, D-LAC meeting. It was very interesting and very happy for, I'm quite very happy because I've been attending to those meetings all the time. And with a new uh, the new lady that is in charge of the program, she's doing exactly the same thing that they used to do. Parents are very happy. Uh, we have most of our high schools representatives there and they talk about the work that they are doing with our uh, students. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Oh, just a moment, let me finish. I forgot that because I didn't write this. I haven't heard anything about uh, about the the progress with the the program of renaming the um, the auditorium in uh, Rosemead.
Yeah, Mr. Cecil, were you gonna follow up on that?
Doctor Zuniga, my son.
Okay.
Yeah, we we actually, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we're gonna need a little bit more time.
Mm-hmm.
Un- unfortunately, with with the surge right now. Uh, we do anticipate that at the uh, at the incoming month, which is February, we'll be able to meet. I think it's slowing down a little bit, so I'm I'm hoping that now we can focus on other things such as your.
Yes, I I, that was one of the things that I told Mr.
I haven't forgotten about it. I think I talked to Larry every week about like, hey, we need to make sure that we.
Yes, then I'm going to keep telling him and we are going to do it, but right now, the situation is not easy, okay? That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, uh, poor president. Uh, just one item for me. I saw this uh, LUSD, they they're launching a program called Student and Student Success. I don't know if Mr. Larry Cecil or Dr. Edward Zuniga, you've seen this, but they're training and paying a thousand low-income high school students under twenty-five years old who are enrolled in LA Unified Title One Schools to tutor children who have low grades, inconsistent attendance, and are missing or incomplete school assignments. Um, I don't know if this is something that's feasible for us to do or what the parameters of this program are. It did, it did come from the mayor's office. And so obviously LA and LA City and LA USD have a different dynamic than what we do, but I just thought the the part of providing economic opportunity to our high school students to teach or mentor younger children, including possibly their siblings, is a thing that, if possible, I would be interested to look into.
I just throw it out here to look into it.
Yeah, and I know we have that program over at Malibu High School already where we're teaching, you know, young high school students, so it seems like we have a pipeline. Maybe, maybe we don't have the Teachers Prep Academy. We don't have a thousand. We can't do a thousand. But, you know, if we could do an Ammoni High School District scaled version of it, I think it'd be a good opportunity for us. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I had really was just a reminder of next Friday. We have the Lunar New Year celebration, drive drive-through, correct? What uh, what time was that, Dr. Zuniga?
Friday eleventh, I believe, at the, start at five o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. Five thirty.
Okay, so just inviting everybody to uh, come out for that. Um, that's all I had. Did you have anything additional, Dr. Zuniga?
I do, uh, just wanted to touch uh, based on two things. Uh, we will be providing the board with a a con- upbeat on construction projects, so that's our quarterly update coming up, I believe in March. Mr. Altar and I have been working on the date, and I believe the March second date would be the the one that we would select if the quarterly for, consider the spring one. Um, with that said, I also recognize that we have looked at the quad renovation, have started uh, the renovation project. Um, my recommendation, because it's part of the modernization project, and there's two options that we can do. Uh, we can do a rib, uh, we could do a groundbreaking, part of the quad modernization. Under these conditions, I would recommend that we wait uh, when we get started with the main modernization project. Unfortunately, that's gonna take more time. So there, you're gonna see a layer of getting that transition done of that project, probably done in a couple of months, that modernization, because it's all outdoors, right? Uh, and then the actual modernization will most likely begin not until the end of the school year. So there'll be a opportunity to either revisit this or wait until the modernization project actually begins and launch that. Uh, so if the board has any interest of doing a groundbreaking, uh, it is fenced off already. Uh, the, some of the bushes have been removed and starting to clean up. Uh, or if it wishes to wait due to the COVID pandemic, and then consider it another time. So that's one thing, maybe if you.
I think as long as we're outdoors, it's okay, you know, so. You know, following physical distancing and having our masks on, I think outdoors is gonna be all right.
I agree with that.
We want to do something like a a a. We wanna do something like a, 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 a small groundbreaking for the actual quad project.
Yeah.
So we'll go ahead and get some dates to you on the memo on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe I'll be in touch with you guys and see what day works best.
Yeah, we just.
The Soto Monte High School moni- uh, it's a renovation for the quad, if you recall that.
I think we just follow the same protocols that we expect everybody else to with proper spacing and masking, and I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, so we'll do the same protocols. Yeah. So we'll coordinate with the school principal. Yeah, we're anticipating hopefully by, by spring break, by prior to spring break begin, which is gonna be late March or early April.
Cool.
Yes. But everyone will eventually get there, though, yeah, so.
Anything else, Dr. Zuniga?
What's that?
Anything else?
The other one is the February special meeting. Um, right now, uh, it is on the schedule, but we feel that it's a short month with the holidays, we could uh, not do the special meeting. There are no pertinent items on the agenda if the board wishes to uh, look at March and get the regular meeting in March.
Well, unless something else comes up that we need to meet, I mean, I don't see why.
Okay.
Okay.
So we will uh, move, move to uh, not have the second one in February, and then we'll re- see you guys back in March here at, at the board meeting.
Great.
Okay, that works?
And uh.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll double up on some, obviously uh, make up some ground. These are not required pertinent items, the ones that you saw today, the ALCAP report, we had to get it on a special meeting, not a special meeting, but a regular meeting, so that way you saw it today.
Got it.
But for the second week, we can wait until March.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Zuniga.
All right.
And uh, I believe we finished all of our closed session items, so legal counsel, if you can report out. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, good evening. Um, for closed session, with regard to closed session item A, the board voted unanimously to appoint Nancy Grigj- Grigjalava to the position of Director of Risk Management and Safety. With regard to closed session item B, the board unanimously, unanimously voted to appoint Veronica Rodriguez to the position of Assistant Principal, Almonte High School. With regard to closed session item C, the board unanimously voted to settle case number two zero STV zero two zero five two in the amount of forty thousand dollars. With regard to closed session item D, the board voted unanimously to approve settlement of close, of case number two zero STCV three two nine one seven in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. With regard to closed session item E, no final action was taken. With regard to closed session item F, no final action was taken. And with regard to closed session item G, no final action was taken. And that concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. And with that, um, we adjourn our meeting. Thank you and good night.